Township Parsippany Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting October 1st, 2013. Public Invited, Public Participation. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:00 PM. Please rise for a flag salute. Mr. DePiero?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Mr. Farrara?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here. Others present Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim Business Administrator, Paul Cosarelli Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino Esquire Township Attorney, Nancy Wazir Miss Township Clerk. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting, October 8th, 2013. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 10th, 2012. Whereas remain posted since that date, a legal notice appear in both the Daily Record on December 14th, 2012 and the Star Ledger on December 13th, 2012. It was forwarded by fax to other local newspaper and local radio station on December 10th, 2012. In addition, adequate notice of the location and time change of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on September 23rd, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appear in the Daily Record on September 24th, 2013, and it was forwarded by fax to the Star Ledger, Parsippany Life and local radio station on September 24th, 2013. Note, council meetings are videotaped and are on Cable Public Access Channel 21 at 12:00 PM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Also, the purpose of this meeting is to continue the open session for the Water View Resolution.
Ordinance.
Continue the public hearing.
Continue.
Okay.
To continue the public hearing. Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, the reason to go into closed session is for ongoing and threatened litigation, legal advice and contract negotiations. Resolution whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of public from the meeting in certain circumstances, whereas the Township Council in the opinion such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and litigation, whereas minutes will be kept once a matter involving confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, then minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by Township Council Township Parsippany Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Nelson to reconvene. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara? I think he stepped out of the room for a minute. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance, second read in public hearings, status of adopted ordinances. Ordinance 2013, colon 24 is adopted, 9/17, Mayor's Action 9/18, effective date 10/14/2013. 2013, colon 25, 2013, colon 26, 2013, colon 27, 2013, colon 29, 2013, colon 30. Were all adopted, 9/17/2013, Mayor's Action 9/18/2013, while when in 10/8/2013. Discussions reminder, scheduled meeting, October 8th, 2013, 7:30 PM, regular meeting Parsippany Hills High School, public invited, public participation. November 12th, 2013, 7:30 PM, Agenda Meeting, Town Hall, public invited, public participation. Administration?
In terms of the bids taken, the...
Do the vice vote ready?
Sorry. In terms of the bids, the front loader, we're going to, we're probably going to table until the next, next month's meeting. If we can resolve it by next week, we will ask for it to be put on the consent agenda for an award. The skating rink refurbishment, we received no bid, so we're going to rebid that. The roof replacement at the childcare center, we're still reviewing the bids and we will probably award it, ask the council to award that contract next week. The Conline Sanderson belt press equipment and parts and services, we are recommending award.
Okay, everything else good?
Yes.
Okay. Engineer Report, October 2013, status of road resurfacing, put in stone area, revisions to escrow requirements in connection with residential sidewalk driveway repairs, Canterbury Estates Vacation Lots 26 and 77, Block 98, no changes to all. Applications, Resolution Township Council, Township Parsippany Troy Hills, authorizing person-to-person transfer, plenary retail distribution license for Wine &amp; Beer, Wines and Liquors LLC. Ordinance 2013, colon 28, Mr. Karifi?
An ordinance amending the supplementing Chapter 430, zoning of the revised general ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, adding a new article, XLIX, establishing a RCR Planned Retail slash Commercial slash Residential Overlay District and designating certain zone boundaries in the township.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, at this time I'll entertain a motion, open this ordinance to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, just to set the guidelines, you'll be given three minutes to speak. If you want to line up, you know, it's up to you guys, just make sure everybody signs in and remember if you talked at the last meeting, you cannot get up tonight and speak. Three minutes, same. I'm going to say probably around 11:15 PM. Time limit will be till 11:15. No pen? Yeah, okay. We're ready when you are.
Naomi Rodder, resident of Parsippany, 181 Crampoint Road, Professor Emeritus of Management from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm here to strongly urge the council to support the revised general ordinance, 2013, colon 28. I'm not going to rehash all the financial arguments which have been done, I think they've been done well and the development will be a great asset financially to the community, but I really want to talk about some of the more intangible types of arguments for doing it and talk about specifically what I think will be human capital that will be brought to Parsippany in terms of new people who will be residents of a high-end development that I think will show all of the attributes of the one that I live in, Hunting Ridge, which has held its value remarkably well over time, but it will also bring in people who will be shoppers and again have that added attraction, and I think that it will also benefit some of the nearby malls and again raise revenue. The other thing I want to talk about is what I call intellectual capital, okay? Whole Foods is known for having an incredible commitment to the community, besides having programs where they donate at various times during the year 5% of their net assets to educational institutions and therefore our schools could benefit from all of this. They have a whole culture of encouraging the employees to contribute back to the community. So I think that we have, in this organization, an enormous benefit that we can draw upon for resources and work as a team in solving various types of problems in Parsippany. So it's exactly the type of smart development that I think Parsippany needs. It is a destination shopping venue. If you go west along Route 80, there are no Whole Foods. If you go north along 287, again, and so we see easy access. I think it's a fabulous location and I think that it will benefit the community and be a great match in terms of the basic values and traits of Parsippany. I think the development is an extremely good match for Parsippany and I would strongly urge you to please support it and do what's right for Parsippany.
Good evening, Board. My name is Marvin Crane. I'm a Realtor with Remax Sevieria Homes in Mountain Lakes, but I'm also a Parsippany resident for 13 years. I have some real-time experience with this kind of a project that's proposed. I was a project manager for Coldwell Banker in the townhomes at Hunting Ridge. We built it out in between 1997 and 2000. We right now have 208 homes there, which have doubled in value in the last 13 years. We are a high-end community where the average income is $150,000 to $200,000. We supply in, for my community, Hunting Ridge, high-end families, well-educated families bringing a lot to the table for the town. Jobs, jobs, jobs. There's still a recovery going on in this country. We need revenue. We need jobs. We need all these contractors in front of me to be employed and not wait for something else to come down the road. A lot of misinformation has been given about property values. There's no doubt that this project with high-end properties will be a destination for the town, properly for the region. The profile of the town is going to be raised throughout the region by having a Whole Foods as an anchor for a project like this. This is a big win for the town. It's going to bring in long-term revenue and just to make the point, my community pays about a million six to the town of Parsippany in real estate taxes. This community will probably pay more than that, between the commercial and the residential aspects of it. We need the revenue in the town. We need the jobs in the town, and I don't think our impact on the community's flora and fauna is going to be too drastic. Look at Hunting Ridge, it was at one time a farm. Go there today, it's a thriving community. The surrounding homes have not depreciated in value. Our traffic patterns are relatively the same, but we have a very wonderful new community that's now part of the fabric of this town. I strongly urge you to support this resolution.
My name is David Pollan. I've been a, I've been living here for 11 years in the town of Parsippany. I'm raising two children here and I would love to stay in the great town of Parsippany, really as I believe that one of the best towns in the country. Slightly different note, I was reading in the Daily Record just, just a couple days ago, there was an article in there, it was interesting, and I hope it's okay to bring up concerning the two mayoral candidates, Barbario and Nelson. Just wondering if it's okay, Mr. Nelson? It was, it was kind of, it was kind of maybe a rough article, but it mentions multiple businesses, multiple tax liens.
Sir, on this ordinance only, please.
Sir, there will be an opportunity for you to speak on any matter that you would like to later in the, later in the meeting, so you will have an opportunity to make whatever statement you want. At this particular point in time, the only public comment that is, that will be entertained is public comment on the ordinance that is the subject of this public hearing.
Apologize, my first time here.
But you'll have an opportunity to make whatever other comment you want later in the meeting.
Apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Nagel through Waverly Court and Powder Mill. I'm here to represent the silent majority who are in favor of this project. 63% of residents, the most recent polls. There are three reasons I support this project and ask you tonight to vote in favor. One, we need the ratable. Two, we need upscale shopping in Parsippany. And three, the concern about what may end up on this tract of land if we don't pass this project. We need the ratable this development will provide. There will soon be stress on the ratio due to the high percentage of commercial building vacancy. We need to reestablish the commercial value. The recent loss of Realogy and the failure to bring Bayer to Morris Corporate 4 and 5 will now need to be made up with higher residential taxes unless we bring in other commercial development. Also, we need this revenue to help balance the budget and provide for projects like redoing the fields and hiring of police officers. As an aside, there is an added benefit from Target and Whole Foods as they give 5% of the in-store revenue back to nonprofits in the communities that they are in. Secondly, as a Parsippany resident of 11 years, I have been guilty, as many of my fellow residents, of traveling east on Route 10 to East Hanover to shop instead of driving north to Parsippany. The lack of higher-end retail establishments has forced me to travel outside my town to do my bi-weekly Target run. Not only do I take the Target spend dollars out of Parsippany, but all the residual spend that I, when I travel up and down Route 10. Can we ever put a real value on this lost revenue for our town? I see this project as the beginning of the revitalization of Parsippany. Whole Foods will draw other upscale retailers to this area, so not only will the Parsippany residents' spend come back to our town, but we will draw other shoppers from neighboring towns. We will gain the revenue for Target and Whole Foods, but the other local retailers will enjoy residual revenue generated as they do their Target run in Parsippany. Lastly, I want to repeat something my mother always has told me, be careful what you wish for. If we don't pass this project of higher-end retail and townhomes, eventually something will be on this land. This developer will not lose his investment. Think about this, if it's not upscale housing and high-end retail, what is the alternative? Last week, the Supreme...
Everyone's got their chance to speak.
Last week, the State Supreme Court seemed to say towns need to build their own low-income housing. The attorney Carl Biscayor, who established that each town needs its own affordable housing, has been looking at this particular project and keeping his close eye on how it's unfolding. I am told that this is not a threat, this is a fact, and this letter has already been sent to the town's attorney in March. If this project doesn't pass, I feel confident saying that this land is definitely not going to be turned into a park and it won't be a picnic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not a Parsippany resident.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Avrienne Hart. I'm a candidate for State Senate. I was recently endorsed by the Sierra Club because I have a great heart and mind for nature. I'm very concerned that in Parsippany, the situation has come to such a division that we can have people screaming and cheering on one side and unhappy on the other side. You guys have a really tough decision to make here, but it seems to me clear that the community is not happy with the idea of added sprawl. As for the... As for the lady's comment about having to leave her own hometown to do high-end shopping in another area, what can I say? I hope that you will consider the future generations, their need for clean air, land and water, and consider the traffic patterns of Parsippany and consider that sprawl will not make Parsippany a more attractive community.
Hi, Diana McElroy, 37, Intervale Road. I'd like to start off by saying hello and welcome to all the new faces sitting out here. The matching shirts are very catchy. Welcome to Parsippany. I'm glad Mathquest got you here.
Ma'am, ma'am, turn around and address the board, please, or I'm going to stop your three minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
For the benefit of our elected officials, I'd like to see... What did you call me?
Oh, my God.
No, it's not. Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, address us, please. Thank you.
For the benefit of... That's right, I am being harassed.
Okay, come on.
Thank you. For the benefit of our elected officials, I'd like to see by a show of hands, who is not wearing a catchy shirt, who is against this development?
Ma'am, address the board, please.
I think we are addressing the board, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn Pauling, 4 Glen Book Drive, Booton. I'm a resident technically of Parsippany. The... You need to rethink this. We have enough traffic in this town, we don't need more traffic, we don't need the insanity of having an additional mall in 72 additional townhouses. Just rethink it.
Sign in and not waste time. Sign in before you speak, please, so you don't have to waste time.
Well, this is a real Cinderella story. Cinderella had a couple of big ugly...
Sir, your name and address, sir.
Cinderella had a couple of...
Sir, your name and address.
My name is Bob Bremercamp. I lived at 50 Liamore Drive in Parsippany for about 18 years, and I have voted in nearly every single election in this township during that time. Cinderella had a couple of ugly stepsisters who tried to squeeze a big foot into a slipper where it wouldn't fit. And that kind of reminds me of this story. This requires not a small departure from the zoning, but a 180-degree turnabout from both the intent and the specifics of the zoning that is current in this area. This is not just inconsistencies, this is a complete turnaround, a complete turnaround. Now, if that's not spot zoning, I don't know what is. This is not a Whole Foods plan. This is a developer's dream. There's no guarantee that we're going to get a Whole Foods and there's no guarantee that we won't get a Walmart. Now, the taxpayers are not profiting from this organization. The measly taxes that have been brought about by the, by the estimates of your own people do not merit this project. It's going to cost us money for police, it's going to cost us money for water, it's going to cost us money for sewage, it's going to cost us money for firemen, it's going to cost us money for all of these things. Now, where is the payment going to be coming back from? So it's not the taxpayers who are profiting by this. I wonder who is? I can't think of who might be profiting from it, but it isn't me as a taxpayer and a voter in Parsippany. We will remember in November, and I believe our mayor is up for reelection. Mr. Karifi is the only, Mr. Karifi is the only person so far that has spoken out against this. Every other council member and the mayor have been so mum about their opinions that we don't even know what they are. We must presume you are for it because you all voted yes at the last meeting and Mr. Karifi was the only one to vote no. We've got to go back to the drawing board and start over. I reiterate, this is not a Whole Foods project. This is a developer's dream and it's our nightmare. We don't need the traffic, we don't need the density, and the Indian groceries have better deals than Whole Foods by a long shot, and they're going to be driven out of business by this. There are plenty of stores in Parsippany and there are plenty of vacant lots that need redevelopment right now.
I live at 154 Intervale Road in Mountain Lakes. I'm very concerned that I did not see anything in the ordinance about preventing any access onto Intervale Road from this project. It was in the original documents presented to the planning board, but it doesn't appear to be there anymore.
Paula Monchine, 60 Redgate Road in Parsippany. I'm a 20-year resident of Parsippany. Councilman, the will of the people has clearly been expressed these past months, and it is against the Waterview Strip Mall. When was the last time that Parsippany and neighboring towns showed this level of opposition to an issue? You, our councilmen, are elected officials. You have an ethical responsibility to enact the will of the people. A recent letter to the editor in Parsippany Life states that the Parsippany Police Force is down 45 officers. The letter also quotes from Tischler Buys, a fiscal, economic and planning firm. Tischler Buys has done more impact studies than any other firm in the country, and they have found that when a big box store comes to town, there is an increase in non-emergency police response time. Why is police response time longer? Because local police have to also answer calls for shoplifting, credit card fraud and traffic accidents. And according to the police blotter in Parsippany Life, home burglaries are up in town with several homes being burglarized each week. I'm afraid. I don't want more crime in my neighborhood. This Waterview Strip Mall has absolutely no place in the Parsippany master plan. Citizens for Health, Safety and Welfare has over 600 members, most of whom are Parsippany voters. We are a very vocal group and are covered extensively in the press, and we will remember in November. Thank you.
My name is Bob Crawford. I live at 35 Hidden Glen Drive, and I've been a resident of Parsippany for 17 years. I've also had the opportunity to serve in an elective capacity, and gentlemen, I understand the challenges that you face tonight. They are not easy, and I want to acknowledge the difficulty, the challenge that you have to make the right decision, and I want to thank you for being up there to make it. I'd like to address my comments however directly if I may to Mr. Farrar, Mr. Stanton and Mr. Nelson, because indeed those are the three individuals who have not yet expressed an opinion on this issue. Gentlemen, this is going to probably be the most important vote that you will ever make in an elected capacity, because the vote that you're going to make tonight is going to, if you vote yes, never, ever, ever be able to be undone. So in five, 10 years, if indeed this proves not to be a good vote, a good idea, too late. In thinking about that, I'd like to ask you two questions to kind of emphasize the point. The key question I have is, do you believe that you have the information you need to make the best decision for Parsippany this evening? Do you fully understand the economic impact that this plan will have? Do you understand the jobs issues and the revenue issues? Every time I've been up here, we've heard different job numbers and different revenue numbers, but I want to make sure that you... numbers, but I want to make sure that you fully understand what the actual numbers are. Do you fully understand the environmental impact, the long term and the short term? You've gotta make sure you understand that fully before you cast this vote. Do you fully understand the impact that this development will have on the lives of thousands of Parsippany residents? Not only those who will live around this development, but those who will travel by it each and every day? Do you have a full understanding of the impact that this will have upon the future of the master plan? Indeed, if a master plan can be changed in back-room meetings between elected officials and developers, then does the master plan have any integrity at all, and how will it serve us in the future? Finally, do you have an understanding of the impact that this will have on a community that has to struggle to remain a hometown rather than become an out-of-control and sprawling city? The second question I would ask you is, are you satisfied with the way in which this information has been gathered and shared with you? Are you satisfied with the fact that through flyers, for which there was no attribution, one incomplete fax has been given, and nobody has taken responsibility?
Bob, 30 seconds.
Thank you. The key question is, do you have all of the information you need to make the best decision for Parsippany? Do you fully understand the economic impact? And finally, I would ask this. The bottom line for you to consider tonight is, before you vote, is the amount and quality of the information you have been provided? And do you have all the information you need, and do you have trust in the information you have this evening? Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Robyn Lidwinski. I live at 65 Forest Drive. I've been a resident for over 20 years, and I've been a union member for 24 years. And even though I have heard the speeches, both pro and con, I've heard my union brothers since I don't see any union sisters here, I would like to say that I'm not gonna sit here and talk about what-if, and you've heard every speech, but what I'm gonna talk to you today about is, where's your passion? I'm gonna ask you, as parent and as my neighbor, why? Why are we doing this? What is the good reason behind this? I don't want my children to be afraid to be around on their bicycle. I don't want them to be afraid to walk in my neighborhood. I know crime's gonna go up. I urge you to think of this, think of it with passion, think of it as a parent, to think of all the things that are wrong with it. I just wanna say one other thing to my union brothers there. On whose back are you going to build this? Do you realize that both Whole Foods and Target are anti-union? What about our brothers that... What about our brothers and sisters that have small businesses? What's gonna happen to them when these big businesses come in? Take a look before you say you want to build these buildings, and take a look and read about how they treat their workers and how they are anti-union before you really want to do this. I'm all for the worker. I've worked on unions nationwide. I worked on it. I believe in the worker. I believe in rights for the worker, but I also believe in giving our people that need to work the right work, but not to do it on other people's back. So please have passion tonight and say no.
I am Julie Lidwinski. I live at 65 Forest Drive. Please vote no to this proposal. I'm a junior at Parsippany Hills High School. My class is hovering over 300 students. My gym class have at least 30 students. My halls are crowded, hot, dangerous, which you wouldn't know because you'd not have to walk through them every day. You would also not know how competitive the classroom has become. Questions go unanswered, students feel ignored, and it is impossible for one teacher to address each and every of the student's needs. How can you say more filled seats will not affect the schools? I value my education. I don't want to walk into a classroom and fight other students to have my needs met because of greed and backwards idea of convenience. You will all not have these positions forever, and as scary as it is, my generation will eventually fill your seats. If my school system fails, we can only imagine what will happen.
Can everyone please sign in? If you haven't signed in, please sign in. They're passing it out.
My name is Michael Sliker. I live at 124 Camden Road. I am the fourth generation of my family living here in Parsippany. My great-grandfather, Stephen Bradley, also known as Mr. Viking, was one of the first people to move to this town. The house that I live in is the same exact house that he built with his own hands many years ago. I'm speaking with the best interest of the three generations that came before me, my own best interests, and probably everybody's best interest in this room, by saying that this can only bring damage to the town. Please vote no. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eileen White. I live at 26 Winding Way in Parsippany. Well over a year ago, I went to the first meeting about this development, and the developers said, "Whole Foods, upscale, how nice." And I thought, "Oh, how nice." Then we went back again, and then he brought up the townhomes. Upscale, oh, wow. And little by little, it came out that it's going to also be a Target and a strip mall. And all of the negative reasons were given by various people, negative comments. Then, today, I look in the paper, and, oh, Whole Foods. Listen to this. My recommendation is that this town council stop doing business with RD Realty. They are the developers. Am I correct? That's their name? Okay. Don't do business with them. Start off, oh, upscale, Whole Foods, and get this, what they put in the paper today. Whole, full-page article, daily record. Don't let special interests take over Parsippany. Special interests and out-of-towners are trying to stop Whole Foods from coming to Parsippany. Don't let them. If they win, Parsippany loses 1.14 million annually in new tax revenue for our schools, ballfields, and towns. More than 500 jobs. A world-class organic supermarket. Parsippany residents, stand up and be heard. Support Whole Foods and Parsippany at the municipal council meeting tonight. It's not, "Whole Foods, how nice." If you didn't want Whole Foods, what are you, a person that eats chemicals or something? This is wrong. Do not do business with them. Thank you.
Hi there, guys. I'm Rudy Katzenberger, and for over 45 years have lived at...
Sir, your address, please, for the record?
I'm sorry?
Thank you. Your address, please?
Three Cedar Terrace... I'm getting there, I got there. Lived at Three Cedar Terrace, Lake Intervail, located to the far end of this established, quiet residential neighborhood that now is being threatened. 30 years ago, the township leaders and planners developed an environmentally sound ordinance that provided for our office and business parks. These parks gave us protected, open space with trees and landscaping with a minimum impact on air quality. Very little bad ink has come from these office parks, either from our volunteer fire departments, township police, or our municipal service departments. These parks are good ratables, require minimum municipal services, and are not detrimental to our quality of life. 30 years ago, the people of Intervail Heights understood and accepted the Waterview Park. They knew that they were protected by an ordinance that was environmentally sound. They were guaranteed that buying into this quiet Intervail area was a solid and safe investment. The Waterview developers also bought into the overall ordinance rules and developed a successful office park. The people of Intervail Heights played by these rules. In the last four years, the big boys of Waterview want to change the rules that they bought into when they started that development. There is no way that this change from a sound office park ordinance should be scrapped in favor of the boys who seem to be sore losers to the serious detriment of the citizens of this fine residential area. Keep this area the place to be and vote no on this egregious ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Robert Sudall. I'm a 28-year resident of Parsippany. I've been living on Forest Drive now for 14 years. I'm asking you, please, vote no against this ordinance. This mini-mall is going to be bad for the community. The good that it does bring is outweighed by the baggage it brings. There's more bad than good. Please, vote no for this.
Hi, my name is Joyce Scolaccia. I live at 58 Foxcroft Road. My address is Denville, but I'm a resident of Rainbow Lakes, and I'm an Intervail parent. I've written to all of you. You may be familiar with my name. I just want to bring up a couple of things. There's been mention of the survey that some people have participated in. Apparently, the number was 300 people were surveyed in Parsippany about this project. I, myself, was called four times. So I was surveyed four times. And over that period of time, during my last phone call, I think I asked more questions of the surveyor than he asked of me. Each time they called me, there were two or three questions added. Some of the questions that they were asking me were clearly skewed toward the success of this development. It talked about revenue. It talked about jobs. What I spoke about with the person who was talking to me was to get some idea of feedback. His feedback to me, and I quote, was, "There are a lot of people who are very disturbed about this project." He had gotten information from the people he called, and he told me, and I have his name, I'm not going to give it because I don't want to get him in any kind of trouble. But I just want you to consider that when you take all this information that you've been given by the people who are paying to have the survey done. The other thing that I want to bring up is the traffic pattern. I know Mr. Meth had mentioned that the traffic increase would be negligible, and anyone who's tried to pull out onto Route 46 from the ShopRite parking lot on a Friday afternoon just before Christmas, or Wednesday afternoon just before Thanksgiving, will tell you that there is no way that this will not impact on traffic. I'm also an Intervail parent. It's going to impact the schools. The kids are worried that the classes are going to get larger and larger, and you need to consider whether or not it's in your budget or the school's budget to actually pay for the teachers that we're going to need and the police. Everyone else has brought up all this information. I don't have to rehash it now, but I'm asking you to consider voting no. The last thing I'm gonna leave you with is, if you consider whether or not you would buy a house in the Intervail development right now, if you can actually say to yourself, "I would not buy a house in that development knowing what is possibly going to happen," then you need to vote no on this project. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Ash, 17 Maple Way, Mountain Lakes, New Jersey. And first, let me just commend all of you. I see you giving respectful time to each of the speakers tonight, and I'm very happy to see that, and I hope it means that there's gonna be thoughtful consideration before there's a vote. Let's talk first about the survey and the Whole Foods ad. You're getting misrepresented information, and that alone should make you question, "Why can't we be told the truth in support of this proposal? Why do we need to get a skewed survey? Why do they need to take out an ad the day of the vote and publish with the Whole Foods logo without, by the way, permission of Whole Foods legal?" And if you call them, you will find that out. Why do they need to do that? If they were being truthful with you, you would have the information you needed to make a decision. On the topic of Whole Foods, the previous speakers have told you, and in the early hearings you have heard, I know, Mr. Krefi, I saw you at some of those hearings, there's no guarantee this is gonna be Whole Foods, and even if they move in with their contingent contract that they have now, who says they're gonna stay? Your high-end shopping can come and go, and we're back to Walmart. If this town wants a Whole Foods, then support your existing commercial, your commercial property owners and get a Whole Foods in here. Put your effort there. Put it in any one of the vacant properties that are on this very same Route 46 corridor. You've got plenty of space. Why aren't you using it? Why aren't you putting your efforts there and supporting the people who are already doing business with your town, who are already bringing dollars in, and you're abandoning them? On taxes, use the same vacant space. You'll get the same tax dollars if you fill it. Union guys, if they have to remodel the premises and rebuild, you'll get your work. It doesn't have to be a new building for these guys to get to work. And so now, let's talk about the traffic and the police. I actually asked the question and was told at the planning board hearing that it would increase traffic by 33 seconds. Really? I can't wait. Does that take into account that it is at the very same intersection where the police need to get out and get onto Route 46? So what happens when all of you read in the newspaper that someone was damned, was injured, died, kidnapped, whatever, because the police couldn't get there because of Whole Foods traffic? Now, let's talk about your Parsippany pride. Do you need to side with the people who live in this town, who have been here consistently telling you how they feel? Or do you need to side with the union guys that have just showed up, the people we've just heard from tonight who supposedly represent the silent majority? Really?
Ma'am, your time's up.
Folks, vote with your Parsippany pride and vote no.
Hi, I'm Paula Dancheck. I live at 44 Winding Way in Parsippany. I have moved to the neighborhood in 1979. Previous to that, I lived in Lake Hiawatha, and I had a business in town, and that was for 20 years. The business in town was Pizza Plus, and many of you up there have been my customers. Okay? Hello, how are you? I have attended a number of these meetings, and I went to the planning board, then I went to the town council, then I went to the planning board, and now I'm back at the town council. Okay? And I understand that this is a process, and that's the democratic process. But I can't appreciate, and I appreciate that, but I can't appreciate how, appreciate the obvious skewing of the reports given at the last council meeting. There's a saying, I remember somebody telling me, that figures don't lie, but liars can figure. You can make anything sound good. The impact on this town and on the future of this town and on the traffic in this town is gonna be immense. Okay? The report on the traffic flow not really being affecting us is, in my opinion, is ridiculous. As I asked our traffic expert last week, or whenever I was here, and he told me that he had studied this area for years, I went home and wondered, if he studied it for years, what did he study? Because the traffic is horrendous already. And if it's not gonna affect the traffic, it might be because you're already standing still on 46, waiting to get across there. More importantly, there will be a loss of a natural resource, a watershed area, a beautiful natural resource in our town. The feeling of home for us and the piece of property that the Dodge tract, that I remember back when we built the house, was meant to be a sanctuary for many of God's creatures. Making a right, making a right off of Route 46 onto Intervail Road, entering Mountain Lakes and Parsippany, you have the feeling that you are miles away from the hustle and bustle of life. Noting that there are offices, yes, on the left side as you enter, but they have kept the environment natural, and it has been preserved. Changing this parcel of land into mixed usage through a variance is breaking a promise that was given to your constituents and homeowners.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Anne Marie Jutan, 30 Forest Drive. I'm here to voice my opposition to this plan. I know you think I'm another Forest Drive person, and of course... And I know you think I'm another Forest Drive person, and of course, we're all opposed. But I live on the old end of Forest Drive, where there are already office buildings behind me. So, this isn't going to impact me as much as it impacts my neighbors. But I understand what they're saying, because we're all concerned about the town in general, not just our little oasis, as everyone thinks it is. I've been here for 17 years. I used to come here as a child to visit relatives that lived in Parsippany. It was a place I wanted my children to grow up in. I wanted them to go to the school here. I know a lot of my neighbors grew up here, they stay here. I know a lot of them moved away and come back to raise their children here. This is the place I wanted to be. I'm not sure I care for the direction Parsippany's going. I don't care for the path you're about to take it to. I really hope, keep a long thought as to the future, and not the present and the now and the economy right now, because we're in an economic cycle, and things change. And because office buildings are not profitable now, they may be in 10 years. Also, if you do this to this office building area, this zoning, what about the existing office buildings that are currently empty? How many other developers are going to swoop in and say, "We want to build a mall there. You did it for them, you got to do it for us." And then, we're shopping capital of Maristown. That's not where I want to live. I didn't move to Parsippany to be close to the store. If I wanted that, I would have moved East Hanover. I would have moved to Clifton. I would have moved right where the stores were. But I didn't want that. And I'm sure a lot of the people who are in Parsippany and have moved to Parsippany and grew up in Parsippany weren't looking for that either. So, be very, very careful as to the path you're about to take this town to. Because it isn't just about Whole Foods. It's about this huge 1,000 parking space mall, right there. And it's just the beginning. It won't end there. It never does. Thank you.
Good evening, council and fellow neighbors. My name is Dana Sudal. I reside at 5 Troival Drive and am a proud Parsippany resident. My husband, Ron Sudal, is a football coach for the Parsippany PAL, and we have a nine-year-old son, Luke, in the Parsippany school system. When I learned of the prospect of Whole Foods coming to Parsippany, I was actually thrilled. There are several reasons why this makes sense, but let me reiterate the paramount reason why me and so many others are passionate about this. Whole Foods has an excellent reputation of giving back to the communities in which they operate. The Whole Kids Foundation partners with schools and educators to provide and improve children's health and well-being. As an example, a minimum of 5% of the profits Whole Foods generates are donated back to the local community. This does not only happen annually, but in fact, a few times a year. As a parent with a child in the school system and who participates in several of the community's athletic programs, I can attest to the fact that we need this kind of financial support. I think you all would agree, this benefits our residents and our children to have a store in the community that sells healthy, organic food. But beyond that, having Whole Foods as a staple in our community and a financial partner to our local programs makes this proposal even more appealing. I am truly in disbelief that this proposal has drawn this much attention to this point. Most communities in New Jersey would embrace and welcome such a dynamic leader in quality food business. As I stand here tonight, one thing is clear. There's lots of opposition from the residents, which they are entitled, to their own opinion. The governing body in Parsippany will ultimately decide this issue, and it's quite clear from everyone I talk to, Parsippany wants Whole Foods. I hope the council does not jeopardize the possibility of Whole Foods by delaying this vote once again. Please vote on this tonight, and please do the right thing by the people, and most importantly, our children, and vote yes to Whole Foods. Thank you for your time.
Council President Stanton and Council members.
Name and address, please.
Bernadette Kopeck, 5 Virginia Drive.
You can take it out, Bern.
Council President Stanton and council members. I'm Bernadette Kopeck, and I live at 5 Virginia Drive. I have lived in Parsippany my whole life and lived back in the house that I grew up in. I have two children in the school system, and I am involved in the PTA and have been a past PTA president. My children participate in the different sports in town. I have taken it upon myself to contact the developer, read professional reports, and learn of the project. Parsippany can't afford to lose this project. It will benefit our town in so many ways. People have talked about the schools being overcrowded. If that is the case, then why did Central and Brooklawn just the other day release teachers because our enrollment was down? I am here to let you know that I support this project and hope that all of you stand with me and my fellow Parsippany residents and vote yes. Thank you.
My name is Paola Rodriguez, and I am a Parsippany resident at 240 Noel Road. I too have children in our schools involved in sports. I just want to quickly say that I am for this project and what it will bring to our community. For example, school funding and healthy, organic food choices for our families. I am also honored that a company like Whole Foods and Target are interested in coming and giving back to our community. If this project does not pass, I'm worried something else will be. Think about Union Hill in Denville and how much it brought to the town with little to no traffic.
Respect your time, please.
I just would like you to just vote yes and help our community. Thank you.
My name is Roseanne Humphrey. I live on 72 Forest Drive. I've been a resident of Parsippany for over 35 years, and I vote in every single town election. I just want you to know that I've attended several of these meetings, and I'm confused as to why the town council is considering voting against the recommendations of the Parsippany Master Plan, which was created to protect the residents of Parsippany. None of you should vote for this new development. It increases the ratio of impervious coverage. It ignores water conservation. It decreases the size of the recommended buffer, and it allows a big box store, many big box stores. Please preserve our community and vote no. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Kahn. I live at 87 Ball Road in Mountain Lakes, but I'm also a business owner in Parsippany for nine years. I work as a pediatrician at Parsippany Pediatrics. I care for over 6,000 children in Parsippany, and I need to stand up tonight and be their advocate. Do not pave over an aquifer. Do not pave over an aquifer. Do not pave over an aquifer. Thank you.
Angela Pigary, 10 Winding Way, Intervale Heights. One of the areas that's going to be very affected by this proposal if it is passed. As I stand here listening to people again, those particularly who are opposed to this project, and have listened to them, and myself participating in the dialogue as well, for the last year and a half, it occurs to me that this whole process is very humiliating to those of us who've had to stand over here and beg the representatives of our community for you to listen to us, that we don't want this project here. And I think we're tired of having to beg you to listen. Not only humiliating, but tiring to have to beg our representatives to listen to us. We're asking again for you to hear us. We do not want this proposal to go through. And we're asking you not to vote for it.
John Gribbin, 10 Winding Way. I am a professional engineer with over 30 years of experience in land development projects. And the project that is the reason for this proposed new ordinance is one of the most ill-conceived projects I've ever seen in my whole career. You've just been reminded that the project violates the Parsippany Master Plan. You have also been reminded that the project is a blatant example of spot zoning, and spot zoning is illegal. The project is fraught with legal problems. There is a 200-foot buffer that exists on the land that is embedded in the land by a filed map in the Hall of Records in Maristown, which is a restriction to development of the land and cannot be overturned by a new ordinance. So, if you think that you can change the 200 feet to 50 feet by passing a new ordinance, you got to think again. Please vote no for this project.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Kahn. I am the brother of Daniel Kahn, who just spoke recently. He is a business owner here in Parsippany. I'm a resident of Mountain Lakes as well. I'm urging you as an environmental professional to reconsider voting in favor of this project. It is not sound. By paving over an aquifer recharge zone, you are endangering the ability of the water system to provide clean and safe drinking water to the constituents whose water comes from the wells that are nearby. What you have to consider, and I challenge you to think about it in this way, is if you have two glasses of water, one of which has been strained through all the layers of dirt and sediment and rock that enters into the aquifer, would you drink that glass of water? Or would you drink the glass of water that comes from the end of the stormwater runoff pipe? I would submit that that water is not the safe one to drink. The one that's purified through layers of sediment and rock and stone, that's where the science is. I think that you should consider drawing upon environmental professionals who are available to you, who could testify to this very thing. It's important to understand the science behind that. I think you also need to consider the wisdom of the layout that's been proposed in the map of what is planned to be brought into fruition if the development does go through. There have been comparisons of the high-end residence area to Hunting Ridge. There's a major difference, however. What Hunting Ridge does not have is a truck access that is facing the back of the stores that's in between there and the residential area. Those residents in that high-end townhome area, they're going to be hearing that truck traffic as it comes in and out through the loading zones in the backs of those buildings. I don't think that that is a wise idea, and I don't think that high-end customers will be interested in those types of residences. I think that there are flaws in the plan, and it needs to be seriously reconsidered. And I urge you to vote no on this plan. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Lubetkin, 15 Robinhood Drive, Mountain Lakes. I'm a retired professor at Rutgers School of Planning and Public Policy. And I have a few questions. Is this the pursuit of the facts or just the pursuit of data that will support a predetermined outcome? What else should we think when the developer conducts a skewed poll, calculated to get the responses they want, and sponsors the whining and dining of residents in a local What else should we think when you have not given our experts comparable time to present? Although at earlier meetings, when they were prohibited from speaking, we were assured that this public hearing would be their opportunity. Our experts were given just three minutes each. Are you looking for facts or just for evidence to support your favorite outcome? What else should we think when your planner's PowerPoint asserts that the overlay does not conflict with the welfare of adjacent municipalities? Then why has the Mountain Lakes Borough Council objected in two letters on the record and signed the protest petition requiring that your vote be a supermajority? What else should we think when we hear your planner's outdated assertion that there will be few school-aged children because families move when children reach school age? You have good schools. With good schools, people stay. Evidence right under your nose is the turnover in the Mountain Lakes townhouses bordering on Waterview, which, when built 20 years ago, had no children and now have a number of them. What else should we think when we hear your traffic expert's disingenuous comparison of POD traffic with the traffic expected in the planned project? He cited only peak times, misleading because this project will have traffic coming and going at all times of day and night, plus both days of the weekend, as opposed to one-way traffic morning and afternoon only, with nothing in between and almost no traffic on weekends. We drive through the existing Waterview Office Park several times a week. It is lovely, calm, quiet, most of the day and night. What else should we think when your experts have not addressed the destruction of wildlife habitat caused by paving over 80% of the property? Will they just die? Or will they escape to bordering backyards for survival? And when they become a danger or a nuisance, will we justify destroying them?
30 seconds.
What else should we think when your experts have not addressed required changes to our assets? Intervale is now a lovely, quiet, countrylike road. It is owned by Mountain Lakes. What will happen when schoolchildren's safety demands sidewalks and widening, creating a heavily-traveled thoroughfare? In addition to Parsippany, Mountain Lakes gets the dislocation and lifestyle damage and cost. What else should we think when we have not heard from your water expert? When you pave over 80%, what will be the impact on flooding? Where will the runoff go?
Ma'am, your time's up. Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Jolson, 6 Scarborough Road, Mountain Lakes. I'd like to make the point that when I moved here from Pennsylvania 11 years ago, I didn't know what was Mountain Lakes and what was Parsippany. And I'm a daily Parsippany shopper. When I go to Parsippany to spend my money, they don't call me an out-of-towner. They take my money. This ad that was run in the local paper was run by the RD Realty. I called the Whole Foods Home Office, or not the Home Office, the head of Corporate Public Relations, and they said they had no idea that this ad was going to be run. They said that RD Realty ran the ad. I just want to remind you that in this whole scenario, RD Realty are the out-of-towners, not the people in Mountain Lakes. I spoke with Jason Bright from the Whole Foods Home Office. I would like to say too that where I reside in Mountain Lakes, if I had a good throwing arm, I could hit Parsippany with a rock. So, I think I have more of a vested interest in what's going on than the RD Realty people who ran this ad. I do, however, have a special interest in the environment that my children grow up in. We participate in sports and activities around that takes us to Parsippany on a daily basis. So, we're members of your community. And then, my final point, I just wanted to ask, because I don't know, but are these people who are sitting here, who are union workers, are they guaranteed jobs if they reside in Parsippany? I wonder if RD Realty is required to give them jobs. It's just a question. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Havronek. I live in 21 York Road, Mountain Lakes. And I love Whole Foods, but then I found out that RD Development is a nationwide developer for Walmart, and there is one Walmart in Punta already. So, I called Whole Foods and asked them for confirmation that they will make a Whole Foods, and they said they cannot confirm that there are any Whole Foods coming in this area. So, I was wondering, then my next question was, when RD Developer is the developer for Walmart and Target, the very same thing happens with the contractors. These companies have contractors. These companies have contractors for their markets who fulfill their special needs. Those are not local contractors. So sorry, guys, it's not your jobs. The second thing is, on Route 46, you have a lot of abandoned space right across the area, a huge area with approximately 300 parking lots. Whole Foods would perfectly fit in there. Down East Route 46, a whole abandoned mall, which all has to be restructured. Those are your jobs. So the question is, what do you guys have to sacrifice for a lousy t-shirt? You must know that I don't. The other thing is, to taxes, you say the taxes will decrease. Your community has debts. The developer will make a profit. He will transfer infrastructure costs through decreased taxes or through increased prices of the merchandise. These costs will be transferred to the citizens of Parsippany. That means your taxes will increase and not decrease. So that leaves the question, who is profiting besides RD Development from this project? You should think about it, because some of you will not. Some of you will. The question is, if those who don't profit from this project will sacrifice their reputation and their values and everything they work for for the few others who will profit, then I should vote no.
Hello. I'm Ron Owens. I live at 154 Intervale Road. I'm not being paid to be at this meeting tonight. I'm here because I want to be, because I believe in it. Also, my shirt, I paid for it. So did the 200 people out there who were wearing shirts. We paid for them because we believe in it. We didn't have somebody come and hand us shirts, although I should have gotten mine last night at the town tavern. My friends, all kidding aside, what an awesome opportunity you have. You have an opportunity to make national news as the community that stood up to big business. How simple it is to just cave in and do what all those thousands of other communities have done in America. And we've seen what's happened to them. You have a wonderful opportunity. We have a lot of little kids here today. We have a whole bunch of kids in the back corner there playing. You know, where's our role models today? Where are our role models? We can't even look to our federal government that's closed down. I mean, you know, I mean, here we are, and you have an opportunity to say, look, we want something. I don't think there's a person in this room who doesn't understand that there does need to be some sort of a development. That's okay. It's what the development is. I got a big kick out of the people who accused me of being against Whole Foods. My daughter is a chef. She buys all of her food at Whole Foods. I go there, I take a loan, you know, and I go and I buy my food at Whole Foods. But I love Whole Foods. And if this was about putting Whole Foods, I would be there with a banner saying, "Welcome." Man, I mean, it's nice and close. But you see, my friends, it's a package. It isn't just Whole Foods. It's the big box. It's the destruction of so very, very much land. It's the strip mall. It's the townhouses. Put a Whole Foods there, and I'll let them sell shirts.
Bernard Earls, 233 Intervale Road, Parsippany. Second generation, living in the same house since October of 1943. So I've seen a lot of changes. When that whole area that is considered Parsippany Heights was nothing but wooded land with one house back there. The traffic increase that I've seen over the period of time that I visited my parents while I was living elsewhere or was in the service has increased probably more than 100-fold. To get out of my driveway, as it now stands at certain times of the day, it takes five, even 10 minutes because of the traffic on Intervale Road. The other day, I was trying to go down to the shopping center, to Home Depot, and it took me 45 minutes to get home on Route 46. I don't know when these people did the traffic study, but somehow or another, their numbers do not match what I physically see. So I request that you take and do the right thing and vote no.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Dubel, and I'm at 95 Intervale Road. I'm going to approach you from a personal point of view. My father was in the first graduating class of Parsippany High. I grew up in Hills of Troy on Grecian Street. I moved away for several years, but when I moved back, I moved home. This is home. When I opened up the newspaper for Parsippany Life not too long ago to find out that Parsippany was voted the number-one place to live, I was so proud. And I can guarantee you, if you say yes to this project, that'll never happen again.
Hi, I'm Kaylee from Forest Drive, and I don't want you to cut down the trees.
Hi, my name is Dinora Conrad, and I live on 70 Forest Drive. And I don't understand why people keep bringing about the organic food in Whole Foods. The last time I checked, that's not the only place you can get organic food. The second thing is the 5% that they also keep bringing back, that apparently the supermarket will give back to the community, that's not guaranteed, and that's not even a benefit compared to the catastrophic results this project will have to the community. I'm very worried about the future of my kids if this project goes through, so please, I'm asking you, vote no. Thank you.
I'm Robin Herbison of 161 Intervale Road, and I'm a voting resident of Parsippany. I've been for over 20 years. I want you to vote no on the overlay, and I want you to vote no on the development.
Hi, Laura McCleskey, 136 Lake Shore Drive, Lake Hiawatha. This has nothing to do with whether or not I like organic foods, because I shop at Whole Foods all the time. But I happen to be the current chair of the Parsippany Troy Hills Environmental Advisory Committee. We were established in the mid-'90s under an ordinance 4-43 and given the purpose to provide information, advice, and recommendations relating to environmental issues which affect or are perceived to have a potential effect on the township of Parsippany Troy Hills. We were asked to study and make reports for the town council. On behalf of the environmental committee, I would like to bring up the following issues to the attention of the town council. We believe that you should be concerned about the following and should consider further study in these areas. Number one is the aquifer recharge. The rezoning will increase impervious surfaces and cut down on the buffer zone. This will decrease the amount of water recharging to the aquifer and recharge the earth. And this is the high-recharge area because of the porous soils in the Troy Brook. Stormwater runoff will most likely be increased and could cause flooding. Number two, you should look further into noise pollution and light pollution for the local residents. Number three, we should decrease the buffer zones. If you decrease the buffer zones, you're cutting down native plants and trees and negatively affecting any wildlife in the area. Number four, non-point source pollution, such as road salts, car oil, and gravel, will be increased on the site. It's located on the top of a gradient and will direct much of that pollutants into the Troy Brook. Number five, this site is located on Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 wellhead protection areas. This poses a significant threat to our groundwater. Number six, we are under permanent water restrictions now. This project will put additional burdens on our current water needs. Number seven, the developer has never mentioned green or sustainable buildings, such as Leeds Buildings. If we do develop, it should be on sound environmental philosophy. As your committee, we promote the environmental health of Parsippany Troy Hills, and we ask that you remember this is a permanent decision and must be in the best interest of the township, its residents, and its neighbors. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Edwards. I'm a nine-and-a-half-year resident of 12 Vail Drive in Mountain Lakes, bordering community to Parsippany. And I was a former member of the Mountain Lakes Environmental Commission. The kind lady who preceded me has taken everything I wanted to say to you, so I'd merely like to say, please pay attention to her words. I encourage you to vote against the development. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for hearing us tonight. From 65 Intervale Road, my name is Jonelle Ferentinos. I grew up in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, where I watched them put strip malls over cornfields for years, and it's not pretty. A few years ago, our house was broken into while we slept, my three boys. We woke up and we found my car gone. But I would never give up on this neighborhood or this community because I believe in it. It's a community where kids knock on doors instead of texting one another. They're out catching crayfish instead of playing Call of Duty. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and I'm here for my 10-year-old, who told me he wants to grow up here and get married. And I'm public speaking, which I hate, so if I pass out, I'm sorry. The kids also drink from the garden hoses because they still can. I also work at Intervale School, where I have had to pull the kids in from the playground, from recess, from picnics, because there's bears and there's foxes. One time, they had to watch a bear get shot. I understand these men and women need this job to make life better for their families, but please don't take it away from my family in my town. Thank you.
Joel McLaughlin, 6 Ball Terrace, Lake Intervale. I just want to say, the zoning was brought up for good reasons, and I see no good reason for you to change that zoning. Leave it the way it is.
Nancy Chaffo, 5 Glenbrook Drive. I lived in Clifton. I moved up here to the boondocks, as people would call it, because of what we had to offer. I moved from the city to the tree city. It is one of the most unfriendly environments to do things in your own houses, let alone to have a whole area of, you know, 26 acres destroyed. When I put a pool in, I had to have the Parks Department to make sure I wasn't taking down any trees in my backyard. I had to have a backup, a flow preventer on my water source going into my pool in case of a water main break that my pool didn't empty into our water system. My pool water is cleaner than the water that's running off these streets. A little less than a year ago, I was left without power for 12 days. My family had to sleep in a cold house because we had to lock up the Barrow generator at night, fearing it would be stolen while we slept. There were no lights, limited access to my street, and very few police officers visible. The children had to go to school on a Saturday to make up for the school days that they lost. This summer, less than a month ago, I had someone knocking at my door at 1:00 a.m. Obviously, they don't know who I am, because I was awake, and I have large dogs, and I have an alarm on the house. Little did they know, I have a gun permit, too. I am now having to protect my land, my property, because police cannot get to our house in a safe and a fast, efficient way. It took them a while to get to my house when I called 911. Yes, they came, but at what detriment? They would have came into my house if I opened that door, if I was not home with large dogs in the house that scared them away and turned on every light that I had in the neighborhood. My neighbor's house also was knocked down that night. He's elderly, wasn't sure if it was really a knock he heard, but it happened to be at the same time. So when I turned on the lights and shined them on to his house, they ran. My daughter saw them run from our porch. This is not something we need in this town. We do not need no cars on Intervale Road causing more traffic jams. There are children on these roads every morning waiting for the bus on the corners. We do not need strangers driving through our towns any more than they do. You cannot drive down Intervale Road and do the speed limit without having someone up your butt, speeding right behind you, trying to push you along the way. I live in the neighborhood, so I slow down. The car last night behind me did not. If I stopped, he would have rear-ended me. I'm sick of that. I've moved out of Clifton because of that. And now, if you go down Route 46, it looks as bad as Route 46 in Clifton does. Do not take the rest of 46 and the view of our area away from us.
Michelle Dancheck, 44, Windy Way. I'm just opposed to this whole thing. I grew up in this neighborhood. My parents built a house for us and went to this school. I come back, and it's different. The Dodge track is gone. Now I have to sit out a light over there. Getting out onto 202, everyone's concerned about Intervale Road, 202, is a nightmare from woodland forest to even make a right in the morning to get to work. It's ridiculous. You want to put something in this spot, it's going to make it worse. We usually get together at my sister's house, who lives at 41 Forest Drive, on Friday nights. Neighborhood. We sit back there, we all enjoy it. It's nice and quiet. You put this in, it's not going to be there anymore. You're taking away the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood. It's not for Whole Foods or anything like that. So I oppose it. Please say no.
My name's Felix D'Amico. I live at 3 Laurel Drive, right in the middle of Intervale Heights. I'm a 26-year resident of Parsippany. I'm also a 40-year federal law enforcement professional, as well as critical infrastructure protection specialist, board-certified in security management. I'll put my credentials against any expert you've had talk so far. And I'm here to tell you, you're dead wrong about the police, you're dead wrong about the traffic, you're dead wrong about the law enforcement situation. It is going to be horrendous. And I know one thing for sure. If I wanted to pave over 80% of my land because I was tired of cutting the grass, it would be a cold day in hell before I got that permit done. And you know that. I also want to say, I empathize and sympathize with the union people. I was a union laborer, worked my way through college. I worked on the World Trade Center. The rest of my whole family were in the trades. They were electricians. And my father was a carpenter and plumbers and masons, and that's all we ever did. So I understand that they need work. But work could also be done in refurbishing and remodeling vacant spaces that we already have. And maybe, just maybe, we might even get a local contractor in here instead of Pavarotti or one of the other big contractors that probably will come in to do this. And we'll keep some of the money here. And the money doesn't wash out. $1.4 million we're going to make, I just don't see it. And we're going to have to put more back into it. We're going to have to put more in to ensure the water quality, electricity, cable, telephone. The pipelines just are not big enough. And 1,000 cars? Go look at any of the malls in the area and see the cars in there, then talk to the police that patrol those lots and ask them what they see every day. And I don't know who's doing this survey, because I've never been surveyed, and I'm right in the middle of it. So, you know, ask them to knock on my door. I'll tell them what I think, for sure.
30 seconds.
And I said this, I spoke at one of the previous meetings, not the last one, but several ago, that you're our representatives. ago, that you're our representatives. You don't represent RDR. Vote for us. Vote for our neighborhood. And ask yourself, I don't know where you live, ask yourself if you would want this development 200 feet, or 20 feet, or 50 feet behind your house.
My name is Todd Cieri, 11 Stockton Court, for 25-plus years. Tonight, I decided to look up where the word Parsippany came from. And it means a place where the rivers come together. Parsippany means a place where the rivers come together, and we're talking about paving over where the rivers come together for some convenient shopping. There's a problem.
My name is Joyce Hardwick. I live at 1 Lakeview Avenue in Lake Intervell, section of Parsippany. I have lived here since 1990. My husband is an IBW local worker. He could not be here tonight, because after being out of work for over three years, he is now gainfully employed, thankfully. I'm asking all of you councilmen to vote no on the proposed ordinance regarding the Waterview development. I hope you realize that this is not good for Parsippany. The many detriments of this project far outweigh any gains to be gotten. You know what they are. They've been enumerated for the past several months. Not to mention, another little slant, something that has not been really brought up, Councilman Ferrara, Mayor Barberio, and Mrs. Barberio all sit on the Municipal Alliance Committee with me. The mission of this committee is to prevent alcohol and drug abuse within the Parsippany community. In pursuit of this mission, MAC committee members organize and coordinate the efforts of the public schools, police force, and other organizations to create a stronger community and healthier individual citizens, thereby reducing the likelihood of drug and alcohol abuse. The Waterview project is in direct conflict with this mission, as it will surely bring more drugs into our community, more than we already have now. Lastly, Parsippany has gotten a lot of bad press over the past year or so. I'd really love to see some positive headlines tomorrow. Parsippany Council listens to its residents and votes no to Waterview.
Roberta Chopko, 93, Intervell Road, a Parsippany resident for the last 37 years. I'm here to comment on some information not contained in the fiscal impact analysis regarding the proposed development that was prepared by Burgess Associates. On page 15, almost at the very end of his analysis, Mr. Snikus states that "The District 6 Fire Chief has indicated that the volunteer membership is adequate during the day to accommodate any calls that may arise from the subject's site," and that "The department is currently planning for a new truck with a smaller wheelbase to facilitate response to calls." The conclusion offered was that the site, as well as the entire district, can be adequately served. I have also spoken to the chief of Fire District 6, as well as the assistant fire chief, and both said that this reporting of their comments are accurate as far as they go. However, Mr. Snikus neglected to report that the fire department has serious reservations concerning their ability to respond to a fire in this development, as it currently appears in the plans. Specifically, as stated in a letter Chief DiMaggio sent to the planning board earlier this year, quote, "We cannot approve of this site plan with only one access road for the residential unit." He goes on to say that, quote, "The fire department would like to request no onsite parking." I found it interesting that Mr. Snikus failed to mention any of the negative comments expressed by the fire chief in this letter to the planning board. As far as the plan to purchase a new fire truck with a smaller wheelbase, that purchase has been approved, has to be approved, by the town first, and then ordered. Fire trucks are custom-designed and cost anywhere from $500,000 to $1 million. Is that expenditure in our budget? Or will this developer give us a fire truck, like another developer did years ago, in exchange for approval on a development that garnered millions of dollars for them? Or will the $7,940 estimated annual tax revenues for Fire District 6, contained in Mr. Snikus' fiscal impact analysis, become a very small down payment on a new fire truck with a smaller wheelbase that will be needed to maneuver in the narrow roads surrounding the proposed townhouses? Furthermore, are we paving the way for a full-time paid fire department by approving a development of this magnitude?
30 seconds.
Parsippany has six fire districts. Brian, I timed myself. I have more than that. Parsippany has six fire districts.
25 seconds.
All manned by volunteers. Can an all-volunteer force handle the demands of an increasing development in town? I arbitrarily looked at the budget for a paid fire department in Morristown, because I know they have one. Morristown population is about one-third the size of ours, and they have less trucks, they're much smaller, and their 2013 budget for a full-time paid fire department is in excess of $3 million. Using simple math, the budget for a full-time paid fire department could be in excess of $9 million. Is that the direction we're headed in?
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay, I made my point.
I don't want to disrespect anyone online. At 9:30, we will be taking a 10-minute recess.
My name is Robert Garver, and I live at 151 Intervell Road in Parsippany.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name is Robert Garver, and I live at 151 Intervell Road in Parsippany. I've lived in there for 15 years. And first of all, I'd like to say that, just with a note to the shirts over here, this is all of our town, not just the town, the people wearing...
Mr. Nelson?
Does anyone see Jamie? I'm not going to... Nancy, tell me one. We're going to go right in. I'm not going to wait. Okay. Make a motion.
Make a motion to reconvene.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krefi to reconvene, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Thank you.
My name is Diane Milligan. I live at 8 East Brook Lawn Drive in Parsippany, and I am asking you, please, to vote no.
My name is Patrick Milligan. I live at 8 East Brook Lawn Drive, and I'm asking you to vote no, emphatically no. Thank you.
Jennifer Garcia, 7 Main Drive in Lake Intervell. My understanding of the facts of this are that Waterview, the entity, the person, whoever that owns Waterview, is selling to RDR, and RDR is asking for a variance so that they can put this development there. My question is, if we do this and you grant this, aren't you setting up a legal precedent for any other developer that comes in here that wants a variance on any piece of land in Parsippany to then point to this and say, "We can put whatever we want. You guys accommodated your master plan. There were inconsistencies. You did it anyway, and you have a legal precedent, and you've set it, and it's done." So you have to vote no.
My name is Judy Foster. I live at 16 Longridge Road, which is Puttingstone Heights with a Randolph-Malling address. I've been a resident of Parsippany for 33 years, 25 at that location. And I have to admit that I have nothing to gain or lose from whether this project goes through or not, but I sat here for the last several hours two weeks ago, and several hours tonight, and I have questions for the council. And that is, how is it that this project got this far with so much opposition? As I said, I have nothing to gain or lose, and what I'm asking each member of the council, what is it that you have to gain or to lose from this project? I asked the mayor, and I asked Mr. Inglisino, what is it that you have to gain or lose from this project going forward? All I hear is about 80... I haven't kept track, but 80 to 85% of this audience says that this is wrong for this space, and I just hope that you will listen to them. And the other thing that it brings up for me, as a person who lives in the Randolph section of Parsippany, is that if I've never seen it before, I see it now, and that is, we need to change our form of government so that we have more council representation for the areas in which we live.
Jim Heisen, 23, Roan Arm Drive, Mountain Lakes. Last week, you invited us to ask questions, and you would provide some answers, and I do have some questions I would like to ask. One, is the proposed buffer between Intervell Road and the residential complex sufficient to protect the tall hardwoods along Intervell? Or will the construction adjacent to the buffer result in the death of these hardwoods? The ordinance states that existing vegetation shall be preserved to the extent practical. If transition buffer planning is required because these hardwoods died, they are to be at least 10 feet in height, which is much less than existing hardwoods. This is not right. Two, the ordinance specifies that buffer areas shall be maintained, but does not say by whom. Will the residential association need to bear the expense to maintain the buffers along the residential lines? Should the developer be required to put money in escrow to cover this expense so that the homeowners don't have to bear it? The ordinance specifies that the residential buffer will be 75 feet from Intervell Road in Section 430-331, Paragraph T, but 85 feet in the same section, Paragraph E6. Could you explain this potential inconsistency? Four, the traffic study appears flawed. It does not consider that the Cherry Hill Road, Route 46 intersection, is already congested at rush hour. Now, with more traffic throughout the day, congestion will increase at non-rush hour times. Improvements to that intersection will be required. I'm wondering how much money has been included for road improvements in your economic study. I anticipate this will be expensive, as I think about the major road improvements that have been made down on New Road, where buildings were condemned, and the widening of North Bevrick Road at Route 46.
Sir, 30 seconds.
The ordinance appears to be written around the developer's request and not what would be a good plan for the township. You have heard an overwhelming majority speak against this proposal, and I trust you will act accordingly and vote against this proposal. I urge you to do so.
Ed Chu, 53, Forest Drive. I think you guys need to make sure that you guys do absorb our information and understand it clearly. I have a couple concerns in regards to the studies. Basically, you've only gotten one set of data based on calculations, or based on statistics and numbers dated from reports from 2006, which are based on 2000 census information. So basically, just so you know, right, in 2006, we haven't even had any of these Waterview development proposals come through at that time, right? iPhone wasn't even invented, and it's been two years before the mortgage crisis even started, so I don't know if the validity of these numbers can be taken reliably. So, the next thing is, in terms of potential for growth, to change, to do the ordinance on this one spot is supposed to help the surrounding areas, but without the road improvements, you can't get there. And if the traffic is supposed to be minimal, traffic impact's supposed to be minimal, that sort of indicates that it's not a successful plot, if it's retail. That would mean that you're not going to get the traffic flow through the place, you're not going to get customers, it's going to be doomed to fail. In Parsippany, you're 16 million acres, right? We're talking about 26. That's less than 1/1,000 of 1%, and you're trying to rezone that. That's called spot zoning, right? Master plan inconsistencies. That's already been presented, right? But think about it, most ordinances, zoning ordinances are about two to four pages. This one took 15 to actually explain itself, to make sure that it can spell out everything and sort of account for all the inconsistencies that it's going to go against the master plan. I'm going to stop on that one. Financials. If you pass the ordinance, it'll take almost two years for the development to sort of plan to be approved and go ahead. It should take another year for the lot to be leveled, another year to build the structures, and about another year...
30 seconds, sir.
...to establish and complete, you know, establish the business. That's already five years. You're not going to get any income, because they're going to want some sort of tax breaks, and you're not going to be able to recover all the utilities and improvements that you're going to be putting into it up to that point for past that. And that's going to be like 10 or 20 years, and you'll be like five or six terms already. So I suggest that, you know, just basically reject it at this point.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Swanson. I live at 37 Forest Drive in Parsippany. We purchased our home there 13 years ago, with the understanding that, we live right behind us is the Waterview complex, with the understanding that that would be Zoned Office. And now, all of a sudden, we're told, no, it's not. There's going to be total change, totally something different than we had expected when we purchased our homes. We don't think that's right. We don't think that's fair. I have young children. We like living in the neighborhood. We like the schools. We'd like to keep the neighborhood the way it is. It's a good neighborhood, and we just think that this proposal is just totally inappropriate for the neighborhood. Thank you. I urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Tyce. I live at 22 Upper Rainbow Trail in Rainbow Lakes. I am very proud to be an American. I am very grateful that we have this democratic society that we live in. I would like to be able to tell my son and my grandson tomorrow morning that I was part of this community coming together, and that a voice is heard, and that their voices are heard. And I encourage you to take time to really reflect deeply on everything that you've heard tonight, the facts, the passion, the energy that people in your community that you represent have put into this, and to vote no.
Jerry Manning of Rainbow Lakes. Unfortunately, Whole Foods stole my thunder. They put in a food page ad yesterday and today, which was what I was going to say. You know, the project should go forward. I happen to believe in it, as these guys do. They need the work around these stuff. They need it. Previous, we've had a number of persons coming up to the mic claiming to be a professional of some sort. Well, I'm a professional taxpayer, and I like the fact that a development will generate some tax and make it a little bit easier on me, now that I'm retired, to pay my taxes. Excuse me. It's that time of the year. Also, I have one more note here before I quit. Oh, yeah. More importantly, someone got up earlier and said that you should listen to the people. Well, I'm a people, and they're a people, and they should be listened to also. And that's another example of what was wrong with the way these meetings were being held. In my 35-plus years with AT&amp;T, when you're in a negotiation, one of the first rules on the table is if you raise your voice, you lost the argument. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Lori Cancelieri, 242 Pittman Road, Parsippany. I asked last, at a previous meeting, when and where we can get experts' reports as to the heavy metals, the toxic chemicals, PCBs, mercury, things like that, that will be shed by all the trucks and any kind of commerce going in and out of this development. And I would still like to know how we can get our hands on expert, on the experts' reports evaluating this.
We're not answering questions until the end, public's close.
Excuse me?
We're not answering any questions until the end of the public session, the overall public session.
Okay. So when is that?
When nobody gets up to speak, after the last person gets up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Murnier, 18 Forest Drive. I'm against the rezoning. And there were very important points that were made tonight on both sides. But before you cast your vote tonight, I'd like to remind you that two months ago, you voted down the energy proposal. You did so because you said you all were standing up for the people of the township. This happens to be a bigger issue with a lot more people against it, so vote no.
Gretchen Frye, 74 Ball Road, Mountain Lakes, about five minutes from this project. I'd like to address two things. One, the myth of ratables because that has to be the only reason you're still considering this. And I'd just like to pose a question. How come the chase for ratables has not delivered a lower local tax burden in Parsippany or Morris County as a whole in the past? In a Rutgers study entitled "The Myth of the Ratables," Doctors Hamilton and Wine, PhDs, showed that Morris County municipalities that pursued a 20-year campaign to bring in new non-residential tax income were ultimately not successful in lowering their tax rate versus comparable ratable poor municipalities. Parsippany Troy Hills was part of this analysis of 39 municipalities, and it occupies the number-one spot of commercial tax income winners. Despite this, the Parsippany property tax rate increased 42% during the 20-year analysis period, similar to ratable poor municipalities without commercial tax increase or income. The lack of correlation between new tax ratables and declining tax burden is based on the long-term factors that municipalities too often overlook. And they've been outlined over and over by everybody else, the police, the fire, the infrastructure, you know, the highways, the snow room, all that stuff. But one thing can be added, the lower property taxes that are paid by the declining property values of homeowners whose homes will decline surrounding this area. So they have, so they will get reassessments, they will pay lower taxes, and that has to be made up, too. In addition, the deterioration of the quality of life that originally attracted current resident and taxpayers who are now looking at targets and 24/7 lights that are beaming out, as well as the Intervale traffic, et cetera, et cetera. You've heard it all, traffic increases. It is a decline in lifestyle. Why do municipalities often overlook these hidden costs associated with additional people moving into the township, other than the fact that developers are perhaps giving them the figures? The increase in service costs associated with police, fire, water, and most importantly, schools is often minimized. And the assumption is built on, or the assumption is built on the assumption that these town homes will sell for XYZ amount. Well, what if they go bust? What if the developer goes bust? What if five years from now, when we are trying to get income from it, it doesn't happen? What if these become vacant like every, you know, large facility that you see up and down 46? Where's the money coming from then? Gentlemen, I hope you consider this.
John Beeler, 51 Intervale Road. By now, we can probably see the difference between propaganda, brainwashing, and reality. What may have appeared good for some reasons at first has seemed to fade away, left only with bad consequences and the damage it may have caused us. But now is an opportunity to begin again, to value all of Parsippany, beginning one neighborhood at a time. Let's begin again by valuing our residents, the real ones at least, and start by bettering the town one neighborhood at a time, to realize that its people are made up of families and friends and neighborhoods and all of us are neighbors, that we do not have to sacrifice some one neighborhood for the benefit of the many, that we have taken a closer look and the benefit doesn't add up, that we can and should protect all neighborhoods and we do that by making improvements one step at a time, one battle at a time. Let's resolve ourselves to put aside our political or personal or professional differences, no matter how serious or silly, to always do what is right for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, neighbors, and friends. Now is the time. We need to start this healing process. We need to stand together and say clearly with a unanimous vote, no. No to outside influences that would bully, divide, deceive, influence, or coerce us. No to thinking we can sacrifice a neighborhood when not even one should ever be sacrificed. They are the building blocks of our town and we are all neighbors and friends. No to unnecessary spending and overspending. No to private interests who have only to gain at our residents' costs. We should get comfortable saying it. No. No to increased crime. No to pollution. No to not valuing our natural resources. No to increased infrastructure costs. No, no, no. And no to all the things that are so wrong about this project and any project that all of its residents.
30 seconds.
Sir? Be quiet, please.
Sir, 30 seconds.
And no to all things that are so wrong about this project and any project that all of its residents would not embrace. No, not in our town. Thank you.
Chris Westington, 2 Crescent Drive in Mountain Lakes. I'm a certified public accountant. I specialize in commercial and residential real estate. I service several clients in the Parsippany community, and I'd like to speak on their behalf. I'd like to speak with regards to the financial figures that have been presented to you. I know a few people have touched upon it now, but I do feel as though I could best speak to that tonight. I'd like to describe to you the deceit and lies that have been presented to you. These figures that have been presented to you have been missing several key factors and figures that, you know, should be presented in the model that they're presenting to you. Clearly, someone was building this model with severe rosy glasses, and I hope that you can see past this tonight when you make your vote. I mean, you consider the pension costs alone. The pension costs now are over the life of the individual. You consider the municipality costs associated with the increased labor force associated with this. We all know the drain that the pensions provide or put on the burden of the taxpayers. Now consider the lifelong impact of that for the perpetuity of this project. Consider the quality of information you've received thus far, the quality of information, if that quality of information was so transparent as they would claim it to be, then why all the opposition tonight? The project will cost the town and thus the taxpayer their hard-earned wages, which we know have been increasingly hard-earned, at the expense of the developer's bottom line. The $1.4 million a year question, can you stand behind these financial figures presented to you? I cannot. What about the other indefinite intangible value factors associated with this project? I urge you to consider the ramifications of this decision tonight, the permanent destruction of the watershed, irreversible damage. Your vote will be your signature. What do you want to be known for? Thank you.
I know many of you.
Name and address, please, sir.
Sure, Brian. Andy Chaffo, 5 Glenbrook Drive. I know many of you personally, some better than others. And I think many of you know that I was on the Parsippany Board of Education for six years. So I know firsthand what it's like to sit up at a dais like that and face a very passionate crowd who has an opinion on how they want their community to be now and in the future. I can remember on the board of ed facing parents when we were cutting busing or cutting a sports program, we're making a very difficult decision and having half the room support us and half the room not. But it always came down to what we thought was best for this community. And I cannot articulate as well as folks like John and Roberta and Ron and the dozens and dozens of other residents who have come up here tonight to express their displeasure with this project. I would just ask you to carefully consider what's before you. I personally am against this project, and I would like to ask that you vote no on the project. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Kumora, 10 Henyon Drive, Parsippany. My husband and I have lived in town for 20 years. We've raised our family here. And we've been involved behind the scenes in these kind of things, only to support other communities or other neighborhoods that have had to deal with this kind of thing. I guess about 15 years ago, I got a knock on the door. It was a candidate running for mayor, and I complained about all the traffic in town. And after she was re-elected into office, she asked me if I wanted to be on the planning board. And while I was there, I learned a lot, a lot about the master plan and why it's there. And we have a master plan to guide us. Use it. Go by it. To avoid these kind of things. It's there for a reason, and I ask you to vote no on this town.
Hello, my name is Krista of 3 Larch Delway, Mountain Lakes. I'd just like to put a few things out there that I've noticed. While I agree all these people probably do need work, there are places that we can put them. For example, right across from Marview on Route 46 is a closed-down gas station where new things can be built or be reopened for more work. Along with office building commercials, I see near Meadow Brook Apartments, I believe the name is, across from Route 46, where there is a law of square fudge that can be used for office buildings and Whole Foods and all that and everything that these guys are proposing.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public session.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Carify.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Carify.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. At this time, any of the council members like to ask any questions, maybe of our professionals or the mayor.
Is this the time for statements or just questions?
All the above. All the above.
I'm ready to make a statement.
Okay, that's fine.
I have expressed my opinion several times at prior meetings back on the planning board stage. Many of you are not here to hear me, so I'm going to state them again tonight. Belmead developed the Waterview Office Complex. They realized there was no future demand for office space in Morris County, not just in Parsippany, and they sold the land. The current developer came to that realization, too, and is willing to sell to anybody who gives him his price. That land is going to be developed. Now, about six years ago, we had an application. I'll call it application number one. That was an application for a town center with cobblestone streets, a little island in the middle with little trees and lampposts, little offices and boutiques on the first floor, apartments or professional offices on the second floor. It would have been very nice. But some of these same residents that are here tonight were vehemently opposed to that and asked the township to listen to them, and we turned it down. A few years later, application number two on that property was for age-restricted housing, six units per acre, which is common to what we have in most of our townhouse developments. That's the density that we have. It would have produced no schoolchildren. Access, by the way, both of these projects were accessed only through Waterview Boulevard. The town center had a 400-foot buffer to the residential area, and the age-restricted housing had a 350-foot buffer to the residential area. The residents, some of whom were here, were vehemently opposed to this project. Some of the reasons you heard tonight, the aquifer, the deer, the bear, the quality of life, all of these same reasons were given to those, too. This is application number three. If you notice, I was quiet when all of you spoke. If you'll notice, the applications are not getting better. And I contend that if you do not like application number three, I guarantee you are not going to like application number four. If you've been reading the newspapers lately, low-income housing has been mandated by the courts again. They've ordered the governor and the legislature to readdress low-income housing, okay? There is federal money available today to buy out foreclosed homes. I am afraid that if we vote this down, okay? Now, I've been involved with Mount Laurel, COA, Coalition on Affordable Housing, Regional Comp, Federation Agreements for 30 years, and I have never seen the courts rule against low-income housing. I have seen them violate height restrictions, density restrictions, vernal ponds, traffic. They will violate every rule to get low-income housing. As a matter of fact, when we tried to protect ourselves in the original Mount Laurel lawsuit, which wanted us to put 4,000 low-income homes in Parsippany, and we fought that for 15 years, the courts told us that their job was not to render fair and impartial hearings. Their job was to enforce low-income housing. And just in Sunday's paper, on the front page of the Daily Record, again, the courts are beginning to make those same kinds of sounds. So I'm not opposed to modern low-income housing. I supported our fair obligation when we had to do it. I supported that. But what I'm afraid of is a high cluster. Anytime you have low-income housing that's spread out, it's not a problem and we can deal with it and they can assimilate. But when you have a high cluster of low-income housing, that can produce problems that I do not want to see in your neighborhood or in mine. So I believe I'm voting for this to save your development, not to hurry.
I've been asked to address some of the legal questions that have arisen during the process, which I will do. There have been several legal issues raised. Those legal issues can really be categorized in two general categories. One are substantive issues such as spot zoning and contract zoning. It is my view that if the council were to It is my view that if the council were to pass this ordinance and the adjoining Statement of Reasons Resolution based on the record that has been established during the course of these hearings, that both spot zoning and contract zoning claims would not prevail. There are several procedural issues that have also been raised. Council for the Citizens Group, Mr. Simon, has raised an issue, a conflicts issue, with whether or not the Burgess firm and the RBA firm have a conflict because Burgess is the town planner and also the planner for the planning board, and RBA is the traffic engineer for both the township and the planning board. And he's argued that both Burgess and RBA's representation of the township and the planning boards create a conflict or appearance of impropriety. The authority that has been offered by council to support that argument is NJSA 40:55D-24, which prohibits the planning board from appointing the municipal attorney as its council. That statutory provision is unique to lawyers. It does not prohibit planners, traffic engineers, or other professionals from serving both the town and the planning board. Case law provides that municipalities are expressly permitted to engage the same professional with the exclusion of the municipal attorney. And I cite to the Rudy's Airport case, which is a New Jersey appellate division decision rendered in November, November 2 of 2011. And so I think that the case law is clear and that the planners and the traffic engineers do not have a conflict, an inherent conflict, by virtue of working for both the township and the planning board. Different rules for the municipal attorney. In addition to that, their conduct is, as all of our conduct as municipal officials, is regulated by the local government ethics law, and that is a facts and circumstances test, but there have been no facts that have been alleged that would call into question a conflict of interest concerning both the planner and the traffic engineer. So my legal conclusion is, is that there is no conflict for either Mr. Snikus or Mr. Meth. There have been—there was an additional issue raised with regard to the planning board. Now, I represent the municipality. I do not represent the planning board. But obviously, if there was a defect with respect to the proceedings before the planning board, then that could potentially taint the zoning process. And so on that basis, I reviewed tapes of the planning board proceedings at which the concept plan was provided. And, you know, first, I want to assure the public, there was never a site plan. There was a reference to that at the last meeting. Procedurally, what happens is, is that there has to be an ordinance passed first. And you're now at the public hearing stage and the stage where the council will take a vote on whether or not the ordinance becomes law. After, and only after, the ordinance is approved, assuming that it is, would there be a site plan application filed before the planning board? And many of the concerns that have been raised, particularly environmental concerns, flooding, those kinds of issues, those issues are addressed at the planning board stage for site plan approval. They're really not issues that are germane or relevant to the governing body in consideration of a zoning ordinance. Now, the process that the planning board utilized in terms of a concept plan is different than a site plan process. It is a concept plan process. It is not a process that is regulated by the municipal land use law, though concept plans are entertained by planning boards routinely. There's no prohibition against planning boards reviewing a concept plan. It is a technique that is used by boards working with municipalities to sort of vet the potential for a particular zone change. And so I did not see, you know, any defect or problem with the concept plan process that would taint the zoning process in any way. Now, the last issue is the one that has certainly taken up the most of my time and thought, and that concerns the protest petition that was filed. Now, under existing law, the governing body may adopt a zoning ordinance or amendment, which is, you know, a little bit or a lot of bit inconsistent with the master plan, but only by the affirmative vote of a majority of the full council and also with reasons of the governing body for so acting set forth in a resolution. And if you look on the agenda tonight, there is a resolution on with the resolutions, which is called a Statement of Reasons Resolution. And my recommendation to the governing body is that if they do pass the ordinance, that they must also pass the Statement of Reasons Resolution. It's in a different part of the agenda, but it is a legal requirement. So getting back to the number of votes. The number of votes required under the law is three because Parsippany obviously has a five-member council. And the Burgess report concluded that there is some inconsistency with the master plan. So three votes are required. However, however, there is another law. And that law gives property owners within a certain distance of an affected piece of property, which is the subject of the zone change, the power, gives the people the power to change the number of votes required to pass the ordinance from a majority to a two-thirds majority. Here, that would mean an increase in the number of votes required from three votes to four votes in order to pass the law. And I'm referring to a law, which is the protest law, founded NJSA 40:55D-63. And the relevant provision of that law provides that the petition would need to be signed by the owners of 20% or more of the lots or lands extending 200 feet in all directions therefrom, inclusive of street space, whether within or without the municipality. What does that mean? What that means is you draw a ring around the affected property 200 feet out. If you get the owners of lots or lands comprising 20% or more of the area within that 200-foot radius, then—in a protest position, then it would increase the number of votes required by the council to pass the ordinance from three votes to four votes. Now, there was a protest petition submitted in connection with this rezoning. That protest position, as some of you know, or many of you know, was signed by the Borough of Mountain Lakes. Mountain Lakes has taken the position that because Interval Road is a municipal road in the Borough of Mountain Lakes, that Mountain Lakes has protest rights regarding the rezoning. They've taken the position that they own Interval Road, and as an owner of lots or land, they have protest rights in the same way that somebody who owns a home or somebody who owns a business or a piece of property within 200 feet of the affected property has protest rights. Now, there is no dispute that if Mountain Lakes has protest rights, the 20% threshold requirement is satisfied. I should say that if Mountain Lakes has protest rights by virtue of Interval Road—there's actually two roads. There's Sherwood Terrace and there's also Interval. Sherwood Terrace is not a lot of acres. We're really talking about Interval Road here. So if Mountain Lakes has protest rights, the 20% threshold is satisfied, and four affirmative votes would be required to adopt the ordinance. Similarly, there is no dispute that if the Borough of Mountain Lakes does not have protest rights, then the protest petition would fall short of the 20% required and only three affirmative votes would be required to adopt the subject overlay zone. Now, we've provided the council with a certification today from the township engineer, Justin Leesa, which makes that point. If Interval Road is included, it's over the 20%, four votes required. Take Interval out, it's something like 17-point-something percent, and it would only be three votes. Now, on this issue, I have spoken with both the council for RD Realty and council for the Citizens Group, Mr. Garafolo and Mr. O'Neal, and also Mr. Simon. I have invited a legal argument from both councils. I have challenged both councils on these points because there is no case law that is directly on point here. This would be, as far as I can tell, really an issue of first impression in the courts. And my office has also conducted extensive research and analysis of the issue because it could be significant. If there are three votes—I don't know how the vote's going to go, but if there are three votes on the council to support this project, it's quite possible that this issue could be litigated. And as I indicated, there's no point, no case on point that directly addresses the issue. So we've had a look at this issue, and I want to get it right. First of all, it's my job. Second of all, I do think that there is a high probability that we will be arguing this issue in court before judge, and it may not just end at the trial court. So I want to take a position that I believe is the right position and a position that I can defend legally. Now, both Mr. Simon's in his letter of September 30th and Mr. Garafolo's letter, which I've received this afternoon, and there have been other letters, but those are the most recent letters, I think do a very good job of raising really the most relevant issue, which is whether or not the Borough of Mountain Lakes is the owner of Interval Road. Again, the statute says that the, you know, the owner of lots or lands potentially has the protest rights. Obviously, the answer to that question is yes, Mountain Lakes has the protest rights. If it's no, they don't. So does a municipality, by virtue of owning a public street—and I say owning in quotes "public street," have protest rights? Again, that question is yet to be addressed by the courts. The courts—there is a case, the Jennings case, which is cited extensively by both councils, discusses ownership in the context of common elements of a condominium regime. An indicia, which is sort of courts just, you know, giving their opinion beyond the actual dispute that they're being asked to adjudicate, expands that discussion to include other types of ownership such as mortgage rights, contract purchasers, tenants, et cetera. And the court in the Jennings case, which is an appellate division decision, so it's a high court, has taken sort of a very narrow view of ownership and tied it to, you know, dominion and control over the property. You know, if you have an easement right, that doesn't give you ownership right. If you have an interest in a particular piece of property because you're a contract purchaser, you have some ownership interest that's lesser than fee simple title. You know, when you get a deed to your house, you get a deed, it's fee simple title. Ownership interest less than that, you really don't have protest rights. That seems to be what Jennings is saying. And the other part that Jennings talks about is dominion and control over the property. So with respect to roads owned by a public entity, one could argue that the public entity would lack sort of the same dominion and control over the property that somebody has by owning their home, right? Because a public road, a town can't control who goes on the public road. Public road is there for the benefit of the public. The Mountain Lakes couldn't say Parsippany residents can't drive on Interval Road because it's a Mountain Lakes road. The public, anyone from the public, has the right to be on that road. So in the context of a public road, the quote-unquote owner lacks the same ability to exercise dominion and control over the property that, say, you do in the ownership of your home. You can prevent people from coming onto your property. It's sort of, you know, very basic as to what ownership is. So the question of whether an owner of a public road has protest rights is a tough call. And that's not a call that I really have to make tonight. And it has to do because of what the record ownership says. Now, Mr. Simon, in his correspondence, points out that Mountain Lakes owns Sherwood Drive by virtue of the fact that there is a bargain and a sale deed for Sherwood Drive. And that Parsippany owns Waterview Boulevard by virtue of the fact that if you search the public record, you will find a deed, bargain and sale deed vesting title in Waterview Boulevard to Parsippany. So its record ownership is thus established, and those protest rights are arguably established. If you accept the argument—and I'm willing to accept the argument for this purpose—that it is possible for a municipality that owns a public road to have protest rights. If that's the case, then you have to establish that the municipality actually owns it and talk about what does ownership mean. So we've established that Waterview Boulevard owned by Parsippany by deed. Sherwood Terrace, Sherwood Drive, owned by Mountain Lakes by virtue of a deed. But what about Interval Road? Does Mountain Lakes own Interval Road? Now, that's an interesting question. And it's not an interesting question just to me. It was also an interesting question to the town attorney for Mountain Lakes, who actually raised the same question at the September 9th Mountain Lakes council meeting. I figured I'd go back and see what perhaps was said at that meeting, so we got the tape. And I'll just read you very quickly a transcript, part of the transcript from that meeting. Councilman Lester talking with Margaret Gossip. Quick question for you. You made the statement that the borough unquestionably owns the right-of-way. Ms. Gossip, yes. Councilman Lester, could you elaborate on that finding, what you've discovered? Ms. Gossip, what we've learned from our attorney through a title search and deed search was that Mountain Lakes owns the land. As I understand, our attorney, Rob Simon, shared that with Bob, your other attorney. I don't know if Mr. Murphy—if you've received that. Mr. Murphy is the town attorney for Mountain Lakes. Mr. Murphy then says, "I'm fully aware of it, and in fact, we've received the title search. The problem"—he says, "The problem is there is no deed that shows the borough owns Interval Road. What the searches do is they back into ownership of everybody else, and so it concludes that since everybody else owns the property around it, it must be owned by the borough." Ms. Gossip says, "Okay." "Mr. Murphy, it's not necessarily the case. Mr. Simon knows that. We disagreed with him on it, and I've so advised the governing body. However, it's something somebody might yet be able to prove, but I don't think there's a deed anywhere." Then there's some additional colloquy, and Mr. Murphy says, "Let me finish. Roads are created a lot of different ways. They're created through usage, okay? They're created by ancient roads, roads, ones that have been traveled for hundreds of years becomes a road. That does not give you title to a road." So Mr. Murphy, whom I've worked with, I know and I highly respect, seems to have a problem with the notion that Mountain Lakes owns Interval Road because there is no deed. Mr. Simon has not produced a deed demonstrating that Mountain Lakes owns Interval Road. So we decided to order our own title search, which we did. And our title search concludes that there is no evidence—and this finding is consistent with everything else we've reviewed—there is no evidence of fee title having been conveyed to the Borough of Mountain Lakes for the bed of Interval Road. In fact, our title company concludes that it's actually the owners on either side of Interval Road that own up to the center of the street. And then there's a public dedication, which is Interval Road. Now, by not producing a deed demonstrating of ownership of Mountain Lakes, of Interval Road, the question of whether Mountain Lakes owns Interval Road becomes even more interesting. Now, Mr. Simon addresses that point in his letter of September 30th. And what he says is, is that—he essentially argues that Interval Road is a dedicated road, and because it's a dedicated road, it is owned by Mountain Lakes. And he really has no other way to make the case for ownership. He's making the best case he can. There's no deed. So you have to say that because it's dedicated, it's therefore owned. And inherent in his argument is that dedicated public road is the same as ownership. Now, there is—he doesn't cite any authority for that position. That's not a knock on him. He's a very good lawyer. But if there isn't any authority for that position, you can't cite it. So does the fact that Interval Road is a dedicated public road mean that it's owned by the Borough of Mountain Lakes? And that, folks, is really the heart of the legal issue. It's not an issue that we look at every day, and case law is not very instructive on it. So we dug pretty deep, and we found a 1961 Rutgers Law Review article written by Cunningham and Tischler. Cunningham and Tischler, back when I first started practice law, they wrote the Bible from New Jersey practice. Every lawyer in the state of New Jersey knows how New Jersey practice. And the topic of this article, and it is the only scholarly article that we were able to find on the subject, the title of the article is Dedication of Land in New Jersey. Now, my office went through and jeopardized all the cases cited in this law review article. That means we checked all the law to make sure that it's still good law and that there weren't any statements or opinions expressed in this law review article that would have been overturned by cases since 1961. I'm satisfied that occurred and that this article is still good, still good law. So we looked at—and I'll just read you just a couple of quick passages— So we looked at, and I'll just read you just a couple of quick passages, which I think will demonstrate that there is a legal distinction between a dedicated public road and fee ownership of the road. Dedication has been defined, dedication has been defined as permanent devotion of private property to use that concerns the public and its municipal character. Dedication of land may be affected, at common law, by any conduct of the dedicator which may manifest its interest to devote the land to public use. So you don't need a deed to dedicate a public, to get dedicated road to the public. Its intent, its usage, it's an ancient road. This road, Intervale Road, has been run around a long time, long before Mountain Lakes was incorporated even, in 1924. So don't need a deed even to make it a public road. But the most important passage, I think, that really makes the distinction between road dedication and fee simple as being different, not the same, is this, where Cunningham and Tischler say that a statute may express it or by implication, provided that the appropriate public authorities shall acquire fee simple estate by virtue of dedication. Presumably, a dedicator may also, by express provision in the instrument of dedication, invest a fee simple estate in the public authorities. When no intent to transfer fee simple estate is manifested by the dedicator, and no statute gives the dedication that effect, New Jersey courts have held that fee simple title remains in the original proprietor, and the easement or privilege of using it goes to the community as a whole. What that means is you can have fee simple title to the land in one entity and a public road dedication of that property, on that property for the benefit of the public. So you can have somebody owning the land and yet have the road dedicated for public use, so that fee title and public road dedication are not one in the same. So based on what I've just said to you, it is my opinion that Intervale Road is a dedicated public street. A dedicated street and ownership of the land is not synonymous. No deed has been produced demonstrating that Mountain Lakes owns Intervale Road, and ownership is a requirement in order to have protest rights. And since the subject statute only provides owners of lots and lands with protest rights, and the Citizens Group has not demonstrated that Intervale Road is owned by Mountain Lakes, Intervale Road, in my opinion, is not to be included for purposes of protest rights. And on that basis, that is my legal conclusion, at least for purposes of this proceeding, that three votes are required in order to pass the ordinance. And I believe that if that issue is challenged, and it may be, I have confidence in the positions that I've stated, although again, there is no case on point. Last issue, and this one will be brief. There have been issues raised with regard to the buffer, the 200-foot buffer. And a resident sought me out after the last meeting, came to my office, and provided me with a filed plat from 1986. The plat makes reference to a 200-foot buffer. It's clear as day, it's right on the plat. That's what it says, 200-foot strip buffer. That's all it says. They also provided a deed that excludes the strip buffer, subject to the conveyance, which is sort of, you know, not common language. And that's what they provided. To be quite honest, on the basis of that information, I was unable, and I'm unable myself, to determine whether or not that buffer merely reflects the zoning in effect in, at that time, which it does, we did check that, at that time, there was a 200-foot buffer in the zoning. Or whether or not that buffer was intended to be, you know, a restriction that runs with the land independent of zoning that would have to be respected, no matter what the zoning on the property was. Now, for purposes of the governing body and this zoning ordinance, you know, whether there's a restriction on the land or not, the governing body can pass whatever zone it wants. But I'm assuming that it would be relevant to council members to know whether or not there was, you know, a deed restriction that would prohibit development within 200 feet. On the basis of the information that I received, I couldn't come to that conclusion. So we went back to the title company. And we did receive an endorsement from the title company for the developer, and it's their title company, not the developer, but their title company that would have to insure over that buffer. And they were comfortable in issuing a zoning endorsement that ensured that that buffer was a reflection of the zoning at the time, and if it was, then it can be changed, and not a deed restriction. I can't tell you for certain whether it is or it isn't. It appears to be, you know, a zoning restriction, which means that it can be changed, but I can't be absolutely certain on the basis of the information I've received. But the title company has issued an endorsement indicating that they're willing to ensure that it's not a deed restriction and that it's simply reflective of the zoning. I think that those are really the legal issues that I've been asked to address, although I'm certainly happy to address others that I may have missed or that have come up or that the council would like me to address.
At this time, I'll take a roll. Anyone have a comment?
Well, just for clarification, the 200-foot buffer that was there in the original zone was to separate commercial property from residential property. That's the purpose of the 200-foot buffer. But in this case now, you have townhouses which are residential, and it was felt you don't need a 200-foot buffer to separate residential from residential.
Okay, roll call.
Was there a motion?
Right. Boy, you did just ask it. I did. Anyone have any questions, further discussion before we go forward?
We have to contain a motion. Whatever the motion is.
Just to say what the motion is.
I correctly introduced it, so we hear this part here and then we vote. That's no problem.
I make a motion to vote on ordinance 2013:28.
Motion by Mr. Karifi to go forward with a vote. Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call. And if you want to make comments.
Mr. Karifi?
First off, I'd like to thank everybody for coming here and over the course of the last many months voicing your opinions. Like I stated a couple weeks ago, first, I'd like to state that, again, I sympathize with the union workers, but I feel that making improvements to existing retail and office space that we have is what we need to fill. That's what I believe. I have, I have taken the time to go out on my own and reach out to other municipalities, police departments, because that's what I did. And there is no doubt that there will be an increase in crime. There is no doubt that there will be an increase in traffic. Our environmental committee got up and spoke and said that this is not good for our town. The economic impact on local businesses by this project is going to affect the smaller stores that we already have in town, and I don't want to see them go out of business. So, and it is my opinion that this project, the effect, the negative effects on the quality of life of the residents of not just Intervale, the entire taxpayers of residents of Parsipony, the impact on their quality of life far outweighs any benefit that this project would have, so I vote no.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Much earlier in the year, when this ordinance was being talked about before it came in front of the council, I zeroed in on one, one specific thing that the township attorney had told both the public and the council about overlay zoning. One thing about overlay zoning is very similar to the site plan process insofar as the council can really zero in on what it, what the council wanted and it didn't want on this particular piece of property. The ordinance was supposed to be very specific with explaining the buffers, the egress, the ingress, the impervious coverage, building heights, density, pretty much everything that was going to be questioned about this project would be in the ordinance. On the one side, we have a property owner who undoubtedly has the right to build on his land. The land is in question to a developer who has spent a lot of time and money invested in hopes that this ordinance is passed. But on the other side, we have the residents of the entire township of Parsipony, and of the 50 or so thousand people in town, there's really a minority of residents who would be directly affected on a daily basis. There's been a lot of rhetoric on both sides on whether the rights of the residents of Mountain Lakes should be taken into consideration. And there's certainly a lot of residents of Mountain Lakes here this, this evening. I was elected by the people of Parsipony and not Mountain Lakes. However, I'm also considerate that no man is an island, or in this case, no plot of land is an island, and this does border Mountain Lakes even though it's entirely in Parsipony. When Bellmead purchases this entire Waterview Track, Bellmead knew what it was getting into. Using rough numbers, I believe that they were given about 1.1, 1.2 million square feet of office space to build on the entire lot, and it was pretty much on how they wanted to divvy, divvy it up. My understanding is right now, there's approximately between 250 and 275,000 square feet that's available to be built on this lot right now. They've had over 30 years to do it. And one of the reasons why, and I've been thinking about this, is why didn't they build it? We had the 80s, the boom of the 80s and 90s when office buildings were at a peak, and I just don't understand why they didn't build it, because they could certainly have found clients. The only thing I can come up with is that this is probably the most undesirable lot as far as building goes on the entire Waterview Track. It's very steep, it's odd-shaped, and it has very little Route 46 frontage. I have no idea how much this developer is purchasing this project, this lot for. I have no idea. But I'm sure it's quite a bit of money. And in order for this project to succeed, it's going to have to be an extremely dense project. But that can't be my main consideration, because I have to vote what is important for the entire township. At the last, oh, I didn't vote yet. At the last meeting, we heard the fiscal review by our town planner, and that's what I have to go by. Our town planner said that this will bring in about $142,000 in surplus revenues to the township, and about $593,000 in school tax as a net positive. I spoke to municipal CFOs and several auditors, and they looked at our tax rate and what that amounts to. What that amounts to is $6 in savings on the municipal tax bill to the average household homeowner in Parsipony, and about $12 in savings in school tax per year. The bottom line is this, there is just too much trying to be squeezed into this plot of land. I absolutely believe that the developer has a right to build. I think this whole project from day one has been handled terribly, and I wish, and it is my hope, that the developer comes back and engages with the people who are most affected and tries to work out a compromise that the people of Parsipony can live with and some, and that the developer can make a profit. Redevelopment is something that's going to be going on in the future of Parsipony. I really wish that the developer reconsider, don't walk, doesn't walk away, engages with the, with the residents, and hopefully in the future, they can submit another application. But my vote is no.
Anyone else want to be present right now? Mr. Nelson said one word, and that one word meant everything, the word compromise, and it's just not there. So let me go into my thing. Going to go back to a meeting a few months ago, Mary Prezicki stood up when we were introducing the overlay, and she made a comment, when Bellmead purchased her property, they knew what they were buying, they knew what it was zoned for, and she said, "Please don't vote for the overlay." The people of Intervale, surrounding area, and as well as the people all over Parsipony have spoken. And I mean, I think 80 people stood up in two meetings, and if I'm correct, I think nine people were for this project. The major thing to me is the master plan. I'm just not willing to open the door to change the master plan, because once you do Once you open the door on a master plan, it's open forever. My vote is... My vote is no.
Council president? Council president? Council president? Brian, can I please make a comment?
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may make a comment...
Just real quick, please, before I turn this over to the...
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may...
Jamie, give me one sec. Another thing that Mr. Nelson said, and I still hope this happens, I hope the door is open for the builder, and I hope the word compromise could come in. Mr. Barbaria?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to make a comment tonight. And this is, this, this is my comment, if I may please. If you all would like to sit and listen, that would be great, because I just want to say one thing. And this is important, because I have to reiterate what Mike, Councilman Mike DePiero said, with the, no, with the changes in COA that are coming. I just want to read here, and this is, this is very important, because I saw what the residents went through from 2005 to now. As I've said all along, I believe that the Whole Foods project was worthy to a public process to determine whether it was good for the town and supported by our community. And I want to publicly commend the planning board, the public, I want to commend the council, I want to commend everybody for being here and for the process. Now that the council rejected the overlay zone, I have to tell you, I am scared what's coming next. I truly am. No, no, let me, let me finish. Let me finish.
Come on, let.
Let me finish. No, I just need to finish. I am, and I will tell you this, but I'm going to make a recommendation, and I'm going to ask the council, because as Mike DePiero, Councilman DePiero said, it's not getting any better. I'm going to make a recommendation to the open space committee to purchase this property.
Okay, Mr. DePiero, with the add-on, would you like to make a motion? Mike, you want to do the add-on? Make the motion. Here, here.
I make a motion to approve the sidebar letter of agreement between the township of Parsipony Troy Hills and... Persippany Troy Hills and AFS CME Council 52, Local 2867.
Second. Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferraro. Roll call.
Yes, that's the sidebar. Roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open this up to the public for the public session.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carifi.
Sir, sir. Uh, no, give, give two seconds. I'm not going to go far, I'll wait a few. Yeah. Yes.
This is an agenda meeting, we don't have anything else to ask.
Okay.
We don't have any other votes.
Do we have to read it? Okay. Pat, Pat, I'm going to close the session, just do one thing first. Oh, I'll do it after, okay. Okay, we have a motion open to the public. Second. Okay, we're good. You'll be given five minutes to speak. We shut it on your part. No, I think so. Try to...
There was a motion, a second, but we do roll or was it just an eye? Just eye?
Wait, do we have to do this one first?
No, we have to.
What happened to the mic? Guys, can you, hi, can you turn the mic on in the middle? Not the lights, the mic.
Want me to go?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead. Pat Potashia, 182 Walkins Avenue. Brian, this one's for you. I'd like to request that Ball and Summit Streets, they're supposed to be getting road work done this year, that you put it on the agenda.
What? You have to repeat it, you might be close, I can't hear you at all. I heard Ball and Summit, that was it.
Ball and Summit, I spoke to Jasmine. It's supposed to be worked on either this fall or next spring, so I'd like to know if he could put it on the agenda so I could keep track of it.
Okay, Jasmine, can we look into Ball and Summit, the road work, to see when it's going to be done, and... Yeah, okay.
Okay. The next thing is for the town council, actually, it was for the mayor, but he left. On the town website, there's a picture of Mayor Barbario at the Fall Festival, but in the background are campaign signs, okay? I personally don't believe that that should be up on a town website. He's promoting himself for mayor with those signs in there. I would ask that that picture be removed from the website, or since it is campaigning, that he be asked to pay for the, to stay up. I take this very seriously, and I would like you guys to look into that. Now, I also have a question for the entire council. Now, I was here, and I'm pretty sure it was back in March, that you received a resolution to place Mrs. Barbario on the Municipal Alliance Committee, okay? At that time, that was tabled. Now, all of a sudden tonight, that woman says Mrs. Barbario is on the Municipal Alliance. Now, I thought the council had to approve the mayor's, what did I say here? The council had to approve the mayor's choice.
I'll be honest with you. You want me to, you want me to... Pat, you want me to answer that?
Okay.
Yeah.
In my belief, I'm not sure 100%, so don't take me to the word, I believe every member is appointed by the mayor on that committee.
I'm not sure of that either, so could somebody...
It didn't have to go in front of the council.
No, it was questioned, it was tabled, because the question was that it was her being put on.
Actually, I remember that.
No, I don't remember.
I think the MAC doesn't require, doesn't have any council appointments, I believe. It's all mayoral, so...
That's why it was...
That's why it never came to the, that's why it should never have came to us.
It should have never been on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't our appointment.
So next, we'll see Angela or other people. Okay, alrighty. Tonight, I noticed that there were three cops standing in the back. I noticed a patrol car outside with two cops in it, okay? I want to know...
For my protection.
The trust of this administration towards the residents that you need three, five cops out here, number one. Number one, are they on our time? And who's manning our streets? Number two, are they being overtime, uh, paid overtime? And if they are, why do you allow that? One cop would have been sufficient.
We would have to look in, I can't answer that.
Okay, that's fine, just look into it. The mayor has left, and I had a couple of things to say. First of all, the union guys here with those shirts, I found out were handed out last night at the tavern. I'd like to know who did it, number one, because Whole Foods, everybody doesn't want to hear that, Whole Foods has not okayed that ad, so they don't okay that shirt either. Find out who got involved with that. That's an infringement thing. I was going to ask Mayor Barbario tonight and Jonathan Nelson to have a debate, and I don't care where the heck it's held, I don't care if it's held in Town Hall on video, just let's get out there and have a debate. Let's talk about the future of Persippany. I'm embarrassed at this time to be a Republican in this town, I'll tell you, I really am embarrassed. I have never felt this way before. Mayor Barbario's smear tactics are way out of line. He should be promoting what his future plans are for this town and not promoting this childish and immature behavior. I don't know how this council, just personally go up to this mayor and ask him what the heck he is doing to us. It's an embarrassment, it really is an embarrassment, and I am tired of being lied to, told mis-truths, and being accused of things, okay? This council needs to start really preparing and watching.
Everybody sign in.
You're not going to yell at me for using your name, are you? I'm kidding.
No. Mary Przycki, I guess everybody knows where I live, 273 Marcela Road. Now, I know I do come up here and I rag on you a lot, but the resolution for the money spent on, for Bowlsby de Gell at Key House, the Littleton Schoolhouse, and the Smith-Baldwin House, I, as I, the vice president of this historic society, really appreciate the fact that you recognize the important history and the rich history that we have here in Persippany by allocating money and keeping those historic sites preserved. I mean, the Bowlsby de Gell Key House, we really, the society's intentions, and I hope it's with the town, would take the upper floor and make an archive out of it and a reference library for the residents and the students of Persippany to use, to learn, to learn the rich history of Persippany. The Smith-Baldwin House is a treasure in itself, not only for its architecture, but also for the heritage of the Smith family, and they were the original founding fathers of Persippany. Their contribution to the United States when it came to the Revolutionary War is incredible, and their commitment to government service, just like each one of you, even though we get rough on you sometime, is, is, is a tremendous asset to this township, so I thank you for doing that. And you know how I felt always about the Open Space Trust Fund, that it was there to preserve land, open land in Persippany, and I know the mayor is not here, but his suggestion should be well taken, that open space money tried to be used to purchase that land, because it is one of the only open areas in that quadrant of town left on the highway, so that we have a highway scape that we, the residents, can be proud of, okay? And that's it. Thanks.
Thirty seconds.
Time's up.
Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes. Before I get into my topic, I just find it contradictory that Ms. Potashia would go after the mayor for having a picture that happened to have Barbario for mayor. I never seen it, so I'm not going to comment, but yet she never mentioned a word about Mr. Nelson campaigning since January when he sat in that chair. All right, so now, let's get to the business at hand.
Speaking of Mike, please.
Pardon me?
Speaking of Mike, Lee's going to yell at you.
Mr. Nelson, you know that the mayor has raised serious questions about your business experience. Your business experience is very relevant to the ability to be the mayor of this town. You yourself have touted your business experience as a reason why the voters should support you. To the contrary, it is important for the public to know your business experience to determine whether you're qualified to be the mayor. Unfortunately, your record in the business shows that you appear to have, to be bad with money, and you do not honor financial implications. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about that. What I found interesting about last week's news articles about all of your judgments was your responses. In the Daily Record article, you did not deny that these judgments were against you. But in other media outlets, you appear to suggest that these judgments, excuse me, were not against you, but someone with the same name, who owned the same business as you did. So, my first question is whether the judgments referenced by the mayor are against you. I know you said the judgment against you for failing to pay for your campaign fines. Signs was finally paid. Will you now amend your elect form so that the public can see who gave you the money to pay the bill? My second question is about all the other judgments, including judgments by the state of New Jersey. Are they still open? If not, did you pay them in full? If you did not pay them in full, how were they satisfied? The residents you seek to serve deserve answers to these and other questions. One final observation, Mr. Nelson, you blamed your financial troubles on the recession. However, two of your biggest judgments came in 1998 and '24, when economic times were good. I hope it doesn't mean you have a second problem, that being with the truth.
I'll respond a little bit. Administrative judgments, if you file your sales tax, taxes late, you get an administrative judgment. Those were paid off many years ago. As far as the judgments, the sales tax judgments that the mayor issued in his press release, I never denied it, I, I said that they were mine. There was an article, there was a comment on Patch that if you do a name search, the ones that came up that were the same that the mayor referenced were, of course, mine. Other ones that came up were not mine. There were banks, and there were ones that, actually, there was a sales tax judgment from when I was in college, before I was ever in business, which was not mine. So the ones that had my restaurant name and my name, yes, they were mine, the other ones were not.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close.
And those, and those sales taxes were filed and paid years ago.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Carifi, second by Mr. Ferraro. Roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Oh, wait, we have one add-on. Yes, sorry.
That's after, we have to finish the roll call.
Oh, after we close, we're right, go ahead.
Mr. DePiero?
We're going to make a motion to close before we read this?
No, we're closing the public.
The public, okay, yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Need a motion to add the resolution to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to add a resolution...
Doesn't have a number.
Doesn't have a number.
R2013...
R2013 dash...
Two oh one?
Something. Two oh one, the resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills revising the resolution authorizing the Township of Persippany Troy Hills' schedule of Township Council meetings for 2013. Yeah. Whereas the Township Council adopted Resolution R2013-203 to revise the 2013 meeting schedule for the regular meeting scheduled for October 8, 2013, at the Municipal Building 1001, Persippany Boulevard to Persippany Hills High School. And whereas pursuant to the scheduling resolution of the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera, the public's invited to attend all regular Township Council meetings and agenda meetings, and whereas it is no longer anticipated that the number of public attendees at the regular Township Council meeting on Tuesday, October 8, 2013, will be in excess in the permitted capacity of the Municipal Building, thereby presenting a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills, Council of Amara State of New Jersey as follows. One, the aforementioned recitals are hereby adopted and incorporated herein as if repeated in full. And two, the resolution authorizing the Township of Persippany Troy Hills' schedule of Township Council meetings for 2013 hereby is revised as follows. Regular Township Council meeting scheduled for October 8, 2013, at 7:30 PM, shall be held at the Municipal Building 1001, Persippany Boulevard, Persippany, New Jersey. Three, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to take the necessary steps to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act notice requirements.
That was a motion to add.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carifi. Roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, you need, sorry, sorry, no, that was a motion to add, now we need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Carifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Carifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferraro. Roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Good night, everyone.